Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our April 14th meeting. Special focus is our town hall meeting regarding our full day kindergarten approach on a roll call.
Scraps.
Here.
This is Hannah.
Yeah.
Riley.
Here.
This is Kirk. This is Ryan.
Here. Just once I'll note, both Mike Daquia and Helen Kirsch are not available at the beginning of our meeting, but will be joining us shortly. On April 8th, this body by resolution adopted the schedule for this meeting, the date time and location for this meeting were actually set forth therein. On April 12th, 2021, this notice was provided to all schools, all PTO presidents, the BHE president, and posted at the admin building. And the same data copy was emailed to the public library, tapped into Berkeley Heights, Curry News, and filed with the municipal clerk to file and post at Town Hall. The meeting will also be announced on the district sign at Columbia. Come please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Dr. Farley, report the superintendent.
Good evening. The focus of this evening is for us to continue to answer questions and hear feedback, which we will do in just one moment. We do hope that you have had a chance to review the FAQs. We have had many who expressed their gratefulness over the amount of time and effort that has gone into this very thoughtful process. We also have had several who have questioned our process, some very vocally. We, the district and the BOE, are tasked with doing what is best for all 2,500 students every single day. Therefore, we had to take an unbiased and objective view and make the best decision for all of our students and for our future students. We looked at literature reviews, small samples of data, and used our knowledge and expertise to come up with the scenarios that are truly possible for this district. Scenario four and scenario five create equity, more consistent class sizes. Right now, K to two, our class sizes range from 15 to 23. In three to five, our class sizes range from 16 to 25. And as you can see, those are not equitable. Based on the presentation last week, we also know that our children are not receiving the same individualized instruction across our buildings. These scenarios allow us to share staff members, focus our PD and our specialists, and create more individualized instruction, which we know, we don't have to Google to determine that that is truly best practice. We were also asked, why can't equity be served by moving grades one through five, redistricting Murray Hill to Woodruff? And redistricting Murray Hill to Woodruff? First, it is not developmentally appropriate and it's not best practice. It would also reduce the amount of intervention instruction as well as related arts programs that we currently have. And it would cost a great deal of money to hire the necessary extra staff. We know, we now know that Mary Kay McMillan Early Childhood Center is known as a flagship for developmentally appropriate learning. Berkeley Heights Public Schools was a frontrunner in this groundbreaking work. We now have the ability to give all of our students the same experience by creating four developmentally appropriate schools that will help us increase and focus on student learning while preparing for the future. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Reinstein.
One item on our agenda tonight, and that is a citizens' hearing. It'll be a citizens' hearing like we do for all of our board meetings. To be recognized for the citizens' hearing, please ensure your first and last name is listed on your device. And you should use your raise your hand function. I will unmute you, which allows you to come off mute. And dress the board, although not required, we prefer that your camera be turned on as well. If you have more than one question, if you have more than one question, please ask them all at the beginning. The board recognizes students and staff members' right of privacy and therefore encourages all members of the public to address their concerns regarding individual students and our staff members by meeting privately with the appropriate administrative staff. When addressing the board in a public forum, members of the public should refrain from identifying any student or staff member with name and are solely responsible for their comments, which could be considered defamatory or slanderous according to the laws of New Jersey. Like last time, each resident will have three minutes to speak. Given the expected large number of residents who want to address the board, we will keep to that three minutes this evening. With that, I will open the citizens' hearing. If you'll use your raise your hand function, we will begin. The people. The first person I see is Laura Cap.
Hello, it's Laura Capusinski. Sorry, I was unable to change the name on the Zoom.
That's okay, Laura. I had a feeling it was you anyway. Good evening. How are you tonight?
Thank you. I'm well, Doug. How are you?
I am well.
I would like to formally request scenario three be added to the survey you intend on sending out tomorrow. I understand the following items are a priority for the district as well as the community. Number one, space for full day kindergarten. Number two, to resolve the inequities at the elementary schools. Three, a plan that will have the least impact on the greatest amount of our population. Scenario three fulfills all of these priorities. I am very simply asking you to take a chance on a plan you presented as an option at the last board meeting. This scenario will allow the time for stakeholders, board members, administrators, and educators to get back to a sense of normalcy. It will also give everyone the time to properly evaluate if we truly need to redistrict and if necessary, how to do so in the most efficient and effective manner. Administrators and member of the board, can I look forward to seeing scenario three as an option on the survey tomorrow? If your answers are overwhelmingly no, then I ask you, what is the purpose of tonight's meeting? I would also like to ask all board members who are willing to, to please speak up tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Laura, Laura, thank you for your questions. To answer your second question, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to allow residents to ask questions and to, and to provide answers, for us to provide answers as well as for people to give feedback. That's the purposes of tonight's meeting. We certainly understand your, your request under scenario three, and that is noted. However, we are not going to go around tonight and poll the board on any questions from, any resident. Questions from the public are directed to me as the presiding officer here. We are not going to poll the board, and the reason for that, as per our policy, no member of the board can speak on behalf of the board. And therefore, that's why the questions are directed to me. Next person I see is Michael Soffer. Michael, good evening.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thanks for joining tonight.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something and make sure my understanding of the proposal is correct. I haven't really seen this touted anywhere as a benefit, which I think it is, but I just want to confirm that it's true. With, with the two schools, my understanding is that if I have a kindergarten who will, a kindergartner who will start, they will go to school with the same kids from kindergarten through, I mean essentially all the way through high school, but for, for the K through two school and then the three through five school, they will attend that whole time with the same kids that they start with from kindergarten, correct?
Is that your only question, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, so the answer is you are correct. The way this is set up with the district being split, you know, in essence into, all students will be in that same cohort. You will go through kindergarten for a second, third, fourth, fifth with that entire cohort. Let me back up at Columbia in sixth grade.
Great. I have one just follow up real quick to that. Can I just follow up? I just want to ask why, why that hasn't been touted or laid out in the proposals as a benefit? I mean, I see it as a benefit because I personally don't like the, the, the way it is currently where kids go to MKM. They make friends in first grade and then they have to go to potentially a different school than their friends that they made in first grade. And I see this as a benefit and one that should be, you know, publicized as I think a very significant benefit to the proposal that's being laid out.
Michael, we agree. A few thanks for, for bringing that to our attention. We have talked about it. Some people have asked about it, you know, directly to me offline. But thank you. It is a benefit and it does allow, you know, that expanded cohort for half the town to be together from kindergarten through, through fifth grade. So thanks again for, for bringing that to our attention. Have a good rest of the night.
Thank you.
Next person I see is Jess Terenski. Jess, good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Doug. Thanks to the board for, for taking my question. I'm a little confused looking at the numbers from, from the April 8th meeting. So I just kind of want to review some of that with you. I agree with whoever the earlier speaker was that asked that scenario three be added to this list. Scenarios one and two are infeasible. You've clearly established that. Scenario three appears to be very reasonable. On the other hand, just a quick note on scenario five. I live in the Woodruff vicinity and I do not have a student in the district anymore. I'm still in the district. But, but my student has graduated. For people that live in Woodruff, it seems to me that under scenario five, somebody entering pre-K would go to MKM. In the first grade, I'm sorry, when they get to kindergarten, they'd go to Woodruff. In first grade, it would be back to MKM. In second grade, they'd be at Hughes. And then in third grade, they'd be at Woodruff. So in five years of schooling, they would not be in the same school for any two years in a row. And so it just seems to me that scenario five, like scenarios one and two, really aren't reasonably feasible. When I look at then what, what to me is left as scenario three and four, the numbers that I look at from the April 8th, from what I see, shows MKM at being 95% of capacity in scenario four. As compared with scenario three, where no school is greater than 84% of their capacity. Having the school at 95% capacity doesn't seem to me to be reasonably sustainable. And so I have a difficulty understanding those numbers in scenario four. On the other hand, when I look at scenario three, the highest capacity school is Hughes at 84%, but the numbers are much tighter in scenario three. So all of the schools hover pretty closely around that average. So I just ran some numbers and the standard deviation was at five percentage points in scenario three compared to 13 percentage points in scenario four. Between two and three times as, as larger range. It just doesn't add up to me to be a efficient use of facilities when it's that widely dispersed. The final point that I want to make, because you've asked me to kind of throw them all in upfront, and then I'll, and then I'll listen to, to your responses. I've heard the comment that under scenario four, 80% of the students are not impacted. But my observation here is that 80% just isn't good enough. And the reason I say that is I've got vaccinations very much on my mind. And for both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, after one shot, you've got about 80% that that's not good enough. And for that reason, we go for a second shot to do yet better. And when we're looking though at these numbers, we are saying that 80% not impacted is, is good enough. And it just doesn't seem that way to me, just based on the numbers. Thanks for hearing me out. I'm very, look forward now to hear what your responses are.
Jess, thanks for your question. Let me see if I can pick them apart. Let me start with the, with the last one, which is your 80% is not good enough. You want to, you want to see it higher. I, I think everybody would like to see us minimize the impact. However, given that we have a difference in our enrollment at schools versus the capacity of our schools, and we do need to realign the schools, there is going to be some percentage of students that have to move. We've worked many different models to keep that to be as low as possible. And again, we're looking at approximately, you know, 80% don't change. I don't know that other models could do that higher. Your other point was on, you think scenario three should be added. Scenario three, you are correct. Scenario three does move less, less students. It moves only the Murray Hill neighborhood from Hughes to Woodruff. So technically, you are right. That's, that scenario does impact less students. However, however, as we've mentioned a couple of times, scenario three is not developmentally appropriate for what we're trying to do. We are looking to have like age students together. That's why the recommendation is a K to two and three to five model, where we have three gates, three grades aged appropriately in one building. A scenario three goes in the opposite direction. It takes us to five grades together in one building. And therefore, it was not recommended by the superintendent and the research that, that was done. In addition, there is a significant cost to doing that. So that's why it's done. In terms of your question about the capacity, and I, I'm not sure I followed exactly with your deviation. So if we need to, you and I need to talk tomorrow, I'm happy to do that. But when, when you look at those, when you look at scenario four, when you account for the, the pre-K students who are at Mary Kay and are not at the other schools, you wind up with, you know, approximately between 230 and 270 kids at each of the schools. And it is, it is the closest to balancing the schools that we can. There is no perfect solution to balancing our schools. And we didn't try to dissect this in a way to make it exact. However, one of our goals, and you can go back and read the guiding principles that we started with, was we did want to provide more equity to all the students. And one element, one lever we have with that is to balance the enrollments in schools. And scenario four does do that, and that's why it is recommended. And scenario five does do that. It just does that in the second year. So scenario five does not balance it in the first year, but it balances that in the second year. So Jess, thanks for your question. If for some reason I didn't answer all of your numbers questions, you know how to reach me. I'm happy to talk to you tomorrow if I, if I need to, in additional detail. I'm not sure I followed your deviation questions, but happy to follow up if I need to. Thanks, Jess. Next person is Cy Bogart. Cy, good evening.
Hey, good evening, Doug. How are you?
I am very well. Thanks for joining tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for taking my question. So I would like to, before I ask my questions, I would like to follow up on Laura's questions, question. It, as it wasn't answered, because she asked specifically if the option three can be voted to the survey for tomorrow. So can you please advise what the answer was?
Is that, is that your only question?
No, I have other questions, but I wanted to, because I feel like you, you didn't answer or the board didn't answer Laura's question on why option three cannot be added to the survey tomorrow.
Give, give me all your questions and I promise you I'll answer it.
Okay, so that was my first follow up for Laura's questions. And then, again, echoing what Laura said is, if, if parents cannot vote on option, the scenario one, two, and three, why were they even presented in the first place on April 8th? And I remember on the April 8th meeting, one of the residents said, can we see cost implications? And by cost implications, I mean total costs for every option attached to them before you send us surveys. So do you think we're going to get them? And by total costs, I mean cost for re-modifications of the existing elementary schools? Benefits and then, you know, any modifications that need to be made to the, for this reconfiguration. So would we get a cost breakdown for every option that was discussed on April 8th before you put it for a vote? And also, I would like to know, how is scenario three not developmentally appropriate? When you make these statements that we've done this research and this is how the outcome is, and it has been proven that this is not developmentally appropriate, I think we need some data to support it, like, you know, some peer reviewed research data before you veto off as particular option. We saw some day, like, you know, research mentioned on April 8th, but there was no name for the Columbia University professor who recommended a K to two and a three to five model. But then, if you, a simple Google search will bring us like Harvard research data would say is that a K to eight model is the best. So before you veto it off, don't you think you should give us the peer reviewed data and the research? And then state that this is why we are vetoing off an option three? Now again, a follow up on the process at these town halls. So every parent's going to get three minutes. What if we have additional questions and the three minutes are not enough? Can a parent ask for an additional three minutes? And I think at the beginning of this meeting, you said that, that according to the district policy, individual board members cannot respond to parents' questions at this meeting. So if you could please specify which particular policy prohibits our elected representatives from not answering residents' questions? I would love to know that. Thank you.
Great, thanks for your questions. Let me, let me answer those in, in order that you asked them. Scenario three will not be on the survey when it goes out tomorrow. Why were, why were one, two, and three presented? One, two, and three were presented because we wanted to share with the public all the scenarios or the scenarios that we thought were feasible. And we wanted to share not just the recommendation, but other ones. As far as total cost implications and total breakdown, we've had, got a number of questions about that. So let me highlight the answers for that, for, for you and for everyone. As it relates to what we're doing, there is a capital cost to build the four bathrooms at Woodruff of approximately $500,000. That comes regardless of, of any option. Second, to hire the additional teachers and provide benefits, we've allocated approximately $245,000 for those teachers. There is no material cost for any of the other grades in any of the scenarios that, that we have. Scenario four and scenario five, it's the same number of students realigned slightly differently. So there's no additional cost for that. Scenario three, as Dr. Varley indicated in her email to parents last Friday, has an additional cost based on the way we would need to run that school. But there is no, we will not be providing any specific breakdowns. The answer to the question is, there is no material cost other than the two that I just gave you, which is the capital construction cost of $500,000 and the approximately $240,000 for the additional teachers. I'm going to hold off on scenario three and let Dr. Varley talk a little bit more about what's developmentally appropriate and what research we provided. I will tell you that if you haven't done so, please look at the FAQs that were distributed. One of the questions specifically deals with that and talks in a greater level of detail what that research is. In terms of your last two questions, in terms of process tonight, everybody will get a chance to speak once in their, in their three minutes. Once everybody has spoken once, if someone has additional questions, they can speak for that. And the answer to your last question is a question about board members asking questions. It's policy number 0167, public participation in board meetings. So I thank you for your questions. Dipdy Kana, I see you next. Dipdy, good evening.
Hi, Doug. Good evening.
Hold on, Dipdy. Hold on one second. My apologies. I asked Dr. Varley to answer the third of size questions and we didn't do that. So I apologize. Dipdy, hold on one second. I promise we'll come right back to you. Dr. Varley, can you answer size question about developmentally appropriate? What research is done and what's, what you've put out there in your FAQs for the public?
Absolutely. So we did address, we looked at several studies and we that talks about best practices and focusing on grade bands. You'll see that I added to the FAQs a new executive summary or white paper from the National Association of Elementary School Principals that talks about best practices using pre-K to three. And one thing we found in doing all of these scenarios is that we cannot house five grade levels in one building effectively. And so we took all of that information. We looked at what Teachers College stated with their grade bands, the New Jersey Department of Education and how they do their grade bands. And we reviewed the data. We, we have on the sheet, we have a study by school first. We have a discussion by Baker at a Boston college. And then we have a study by Norwood and then NACI paper. So you will see that we have done a lot of due diligence to make sure we are doing exactly what we need to make these schools developmentally appropriate and, and, and basically go by our learning grade bands.
Great, Dr. Varley. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Dipdy. We're over to you. Dipdy, good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Very well. Thanks for joining.
Thank you for taking the time and, and hosting this town hall today. Earlier in the day, I did send a list of questions to the board members with, you know, just key parameters, key in my mind. But I hope that they were considerations in how these scenarios were almost weighed, you know, one next to each other. So I'm looking to get some more, a better understanding of the data that went behind the decision making between scenarios three, four, and five. So I would appreciate if, if I could get that data. I do want to sort of, it's, I want to build upon the questions that, that a few people have already asked here. And, and to me, this whole, you know, approach of saying, we want to ban the, the school now in the K to two, three to five grades as being more developmentally appropriate. Do we have data that suggests any New Jersey school districts that have moved to this model and that have demonstrated better student grades or, you know, better productivity when it comes to the teachers? Anything that would support why it's important for us to move to this model now in, in about four months? The, and, and so a related question to that is, when, when we heard that there were three sort of principles, I think in the way it was laid out, one was it needs to be developmentally appropriate. The second one was, you know, I think least disruption to the students. And one more, when it is coming to the questions and the answers that we're hearing back, it seems like the banding, the banding of the grades seems to be the most important, right? The other ones were, they were also ran on the list of considerations. But the ones that, that you seem to be defaulting in terms of why you're choosing this path seems to be the, the K to two, three to five model, which is why I'm really interested in seeing what data do you have to support that this is the right way to go?
Great, thanks for your questions. So Dipdy, to answer that, I answered, I have seen your email and I know that you had a conversation this afternoon. Some of the questions that you posed in your email, I just answered in my response to, to Cy because a number of your questions were about the cost breakdown for different, different elements of the education. And we're not going to provide any more cost breakdown because there really isn't any. There's no material cost breakdown or difference for that, other than the two that I mentioned. I will go back and look at your questions again later, later this evening. And I know, but we've answered some of them. If somehow we missed them, I can assure you, we'll get back to you. I'll let Dr. Varley answer the, the question about K to two and three to five in, in New Jersey in a second. To your question about the guiding principles, there were five of them. To your question about the guiding principles, there were five of them that we talked about. The first one was around developmentally appropriate and providing more equity. And the answer is yes, that was the most important one because that is the one that impacts education first and foremost. The other ones were important because we had to make some decisions. The guiding principles were about our philosophy and our values, and they guided us to getting our decision. But you are correct. That was the most important one, and that is the why. But do you want to talk about K to two and three to five? Are you aware of anyone specifically in, in New Jersey? Or are they in, or are they just in other places that you can address?
So they're definitely in New Jersey. I know off the top of my head, I don't remember all the names, but I know Sparta is K to two. I know Chatham is K to three. Florham Park is K to, K to two, three to five. So I do know, we looked at the makeup of schools in New Jersey. The issue that we have and any district has is that you generally don't walk into a district and you're able to maneuver it the way it needs to be. Such as if you look right down the road at New Providence, they are packed. Their one to fives are packed and, or their K to fives are packed, and they can't add full-day kindergarten. We don't have that issue. We have the ability to add full-day kindergarten by moving several children around, 20% of our students around, and we can offer full-day kindergarten without impacting the taxpayers as well as not going out for a referendum or adding on to any of our buildings. So we're able to give this to the community as, as a, and to the students as a foundation of learning.
But I, I, I hear you, but what I'm not still hearing is what are we, you know, what is the, how do you measure success? You're making a big change to the school district. How are you going to measure the success? And, and what demonstrable proof do we have from other places where they said, we moved and our, you know, student grades or their, how do I say this, the, the equity or the level of education, it, it went up 20%, like anything to measure. This is a huge change in the district, right? And you can see, you can hear the concerns in everybody's voices. We are just trying to see, why do we think this is a good thing to do right now? Where is the data that's supporting it?
So we will definitely, that, we will definitely see an increase in our equity. We have nowhere to, but to go up on the equity issue that we have across of our, across our buildings. If you look at all the literature that we have posted, they, the experts talk about how this is a way for our early childhood students, as well as early childhood teachers, as well as our elementary teachers. They are able to specialize and focus on only those age kids and create a specialized learning environment. Academic achievement has increased in the few studies that we've looked at through K to two, three to five. And we can focus our counselors on early childhood students, our counselors on elementary students. We've specialized in six through eight and nine through 12. Our early childhood students, as well as our elementary students deserve the same thing.
Great, Dr. Varley. Thank you. Dipty, thanks for your question. Michael LeBlanc, Michael, good evening. How are you tonight?
Good evening. Of course, I can't turn my camera on, but I, I did unmute. So let's start from the beginning. Again, I would like to reiterate that I'm deeply troubled by the rushed nature of these plans and the proposals being sent to the public. We've not had ample time to review them. We've not had ample time to even plan these things. Research on what is appropriate practice in education changed regularly. Many years ago, when I started teaching, about 15, 17 years ago, educators in my district were instructed to no longer to use red to mark papers. That practice since then has been abandoned as utter nonsense because we understand that if you're marking blue on a blue paper, they can't see the feedback. So to judge it on one short-term piece of literature that is new studies may not be effective in the long term. And generations of studies may not exactly show out everything we're hoping to see here. Secondly, earlier this evening, I finally received information I requested 10 days ago about redistricting. Only one member of the board has a child that might be impacted by redistricting. It's distressing that the members of the board are making decisions that impact the community, the children of the district, my family included in that, are not themselves impacted. They are not stakeholders. They are making decisions for other people without necessarily being impacted themselves. At the end of the last meeting, around two hours and 50 minutes and about 10 minutes before the end, I raised my hand a second time after some comments made by Dr. Barley. Dr. Barley noted that the planning process did not require public input, that the community lacked the expertise for the planning process. Here's where my questions begin. First, what was that claim based on? What survey of the community done was done to determine what note, that no one could offer any assistance in the planning process? Our community has numerous educators, including myself and my wife, and other professors who can offer their input to the district when it comes to planning, logistics. What experts do the members of the board have to complete this task? What makes them more qualified to complete the task without public input? Third, when discussing busing distances, how is this is determined? Under these new school plans, both of my children have to cross railroad tracks to walk to and from school. Are the routes determined by walkable routes or as the crow flies? Those are significantly different. Fourth, did the BOE consider how their actions would impact the community outside of the schools, including but not limited to property values, property taxes, community organizations like Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, or scouting as a whole? Fifth, what feedback have teachers and administrators from the district provided in regards to these plans? Sixth, what was the bidding process for the bathroom renovations? Was this publicly bid? Is it an in-house construction? Lastly, the board has not and did not address the question to last being how schools respond to the stress and displacement that students and staff will face with these changes in the fall. The district has not really discussed how IEP students will be handled. It was very, very barely touched on in the last meeting. What are the specific plans? I'm emphasizing plans, not, oh, we're going to do something. What plans are going to be implemented to alleviate the problems that will occur if these plans are implemented?
Michael, thanks for your question. Just clarify, can you just restate your last question when you say what plans need to be, was that focused on IEP students?
Or is that? As a whole, moving students to new schools will cause emotional stress and trauma. Moving teachers to new schools and, and buildings will cause trauma to them. What are the plans to deal with those things? Because it's going to cause absenteeism. It's going to cause emotional problems, discipline issues with children. It will. What is going to be done to prevent those problems?
Got it. Michael, thanks for your questions. You had a lot of questions in, in there. Let me see if I can break them, break them down a little bit. Your first two were, were comments. So thank you for those comments. In terms of your third, about board of ed members who are impacted versus not, not impacted. My response to you today was what you asked for was whether people, specific board members, whether the students impacted. I can assure you that although there are board members like myself who don't have a current student impacted, all board members have had their kids go through the school system and have sat at this table and understood the impacts for multiple changes at multiple schools. And although I'll speak for myself personally, I don't have a student in pre-K through four right now who's not impacted. I do remember when my children were there and to, and, and I will, I will actively state that, you know, all board members take the responsibility for all students, whether they have a kid in that district or not. So the fact that only one board member has a student impacted, I don't believe has anything to do about whether the board members could come to a decision that's in the best interest of students is fundamentally why we're here. I'll let Dr. Varley talk about the community input and her comments. You asked those directly of her. What expertise does the board have to complete this, this task? The board serves in a, in a governing role. The superintendent and her staff are the experts on education. Our role is by definition to oversee and to govern, to make sure the schools are, are well-run. The recommendations come from Dr. Varley and her administrative team. And the board in its role is to approve those recommendations and, and use its, and use its guidance in that governing role. We have had board members in the past who have had educational backgrounds. However, without knowing the exact numbers, many people don't. But again, our job is to govern, and I, I believe we've done that for both this decision and many other decisions as well. In terms of busing distances determined, we, we do look at how you walk, not how the crow flies. We look at both the driving distances to school as well as the walking distances to school. If there's a walking path, some of you know Kelly Sheen, who's our transportation coordinator, and she has been actively looking at every one of these to know which ones are walkable, which ones are not walkable. We have had our Berkeley Heights Police Department Traffic Safety Officer look at our redistricting and realignment plans and to make sure that safety is of utmost importance. They have looked at those and they have recommended that. We'll also be working with them to reposition crossing guards if that's required. That's something they will work through with us. I'll let Dr. Varley answer the question about feedback from teachers and, and administrators. I'll let Donna talk about the bidding. It is an open bidding process. There's no difference in the bidding process for these bathrooms that we've done for any other bidding that we've done for any other construction we work. We have an open public bid for that. The bids are opened and all of that is public and they'll be announced when they go out. They'll be announced when they're open and will be announced that who's selected. And we have very strict protocols as to how we answer those. To your last question about transitions, we actively have plans for transitions today. When, when, today, when students transition from Mary Kay to elementary schools, from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school, we already have transition plans in place. We will add to those transition plans. Obviously, we're going to have some unique transitions that we will only have for potentially a year or two, and we'll add to those plans. I, I cannot share with you what those plans are tonight. We don't have the details of those. But I can assure you that we will take the transition plans that we have and we will add to those. So Dr. Varley, I'll come back to you for questions three and six. The first one was around community input. Can you talk about what was done there? And then we'll come back to the last question.
So as we talked about last week, we, the, the district administration, we are hired to do what is best for all 2,500 students and take an objective view of what is best for these current students as well as the future students of Berkeley Heights Public Schools. And so we determined what our choices were and the options based on budget. And then we reached out for community, community input. It is left up to us to make these decisions and then get input based on the decisions we've made. And we know what is developmentally appropriate. We know what we want for this district. And basically, we're objective. And most parents cannot be objective about what happens within the district.
And Melissa, the second question was around the feedback from teachers and administrators who either were part of what was done or conversations you've had with them since.
So we did, I did have a meeting with the teachers and we went through the option, the scenarios with them. And then we sent, sent out a survey, which we have been actively looking at the survey as the responses come in based on the teachers. All the administrative team have had an option to review the scenarios as well and have had input as well.
Great. Melissa, thanks for your feedback. Michael, thanks for your questions.
But you didn't answer the questions. They were not, those were not answers. What is the feedback from teachers? Do they support this plan? Do they reject it? That's the question. Where do the teachers in this district stand regarding this? That was the question. What is their feedback?
It's, it's, it's a mixed bag. Some have said that, you know, they know we have been inequitable for years and it's time to fix it. There have been others who's asked if we could wait a couple of years to do it. There have been others to say, let's rip the Band-Aid off and do this now. It is, it's a, it's a mixed bag of feedback.
And again, you didn't go back to my original question about the claiming base that no one in the community has expertise to offer assistance with these planning. We, there are licensed educators in our community who can offer feedback to the district. And, and the expertise of veteran staff, veterans, teachers are being ignored. And I don't understand why you would turn down experienced veteran people who have invested interest in the community of what's going on to just say, oh, we don't need their expertise.
Absolutely not. We just need an objective view as opposed to emotional views. We need objective views, and we, we did the objective views.
Objective views are not always the best views to hold.
All right. Well, we'll leave it at that, Michael. Thanks for your comments and questions tonight. Liz Kane, Liz, good evening.
Good evening. So I know I'm, I can, you can hear me, yes?
We can hear you fine.
Okay. So I know I'm pretty active and in the town, but I'm, I'm talking tonight just as a parent in the district. Every change has great impacts and growing pains. And I don't think anyone wanted to see a solution to this implementation of full-day kindergarten as adding buildings or putting additions on to the school, any of the schools, especially now that we've just built that municipal building and, and the new library and everything else. So the cost to keep the status quo and all the students in full-day kindergarten without adding on to buildings, I don't think is a viable solution. I very much appreciate Dr. Varley's professionalism and background and her education. Again, let me stress, Dr. Varley, right? She has been using, I believe, we've hired her for her expertise. And the town has hired her for her expertise and her education and her background. And so I appreciate all the ideas and the scenarios that she has gone through and vetted and gone through, through there. One of my things is I'm curious, I just want, my first question is, once this move, talking about having two schools that are K through two and two schools that are three through five, that would keep those groups together. So those students who are together at K through two will be the, will stay together three through five as well. I know my stu, my kids have, went through kindergarten, first grade at Mary Kay. Then all their friends that they had made and everybody that they had worked with split across three schools and then coming back together at Columbia. It, that alone was very disruptive and very hard. And not having full-day kindergarten was, was even harder on families who needed that full-day kindergarten and therefore would skip Mary Kay altogether and have to pay for first grade just to maintain that school. So I think the solution of having these students together from kindergarten through fifth grade and then merging with the other half of the town through six through eight is a great solution. As for why not wait a little bit longer, I just don't think we should wait any longer. I've been attending Board of Ed meetings for 12 years. And every year, we've been asking for full-day kindergarten. And I have neighbors who've been coming up to me saying, I, what's this? What are all these signs on people's front yards? Because I've been asking for a full-day kindergarten since my kid was that young and mine are in college now. So they don't even know what the, the scenarios are. They said, it's about time that this is coming. I had the similar question. I'm very curious to hear what the educators and the teachers' union think of the plans and any problems that they may see because I am noticing a lot of educators here online. And as for the other comment, I just wanted to make about the board not having young children. I, I find that, and I've met and know every person on this board and their dedic, their dedication to this town and to this board and to the education of our students that are still here are in the schools is amazing. And I appreciate every one of the board members and them giving up all their time and coming across all of these problems objectively and working through all the scenarios. The only other thing I would ask is that you, I urge you to readdress or rethink about the busing. I know my daughter was in kindergarten when courtesy busing almost had to disappear due to budgeting. And she fell within the two miles. When she started kindergarten, she was four years old because of the cutoff. And to expect a four-year-old to walk two miles is just not possible. So, and what, they were able to work it out such that courtesy busing did not go away for her. But I think two miles overall is just too long for any student, especially when we're talking about all the different ages and grade levels. And I know I brought up in the past about middle school and high school just start school way too early. And to expect them to walk two miles in addition to getting to school on time for 7:50 or 8:10 is just not possible. So just overall, I think that would have to be addressed. And not just with the youngest of students, but overall. So I guess my only two questions, one was about the teachers' union and the educators, what their feedback and ideas are. And just a clarification, do all these students stay together longer?
Great. Liz, thank you very much for your comments. Let me just address your first comment about the additions to Mary Kay McMillan. So yes, although conceptually a scenario to add a wing onto Mary Kay McMillan, that would not be financially prudent for us to do. We have the capacity. It's just not aligned to the right school. So although that was conceptually an idea, it's not something that we would do or to spend additional money. Let me also, before I answer your question, thank you both for your comments about Dr. Varley and her expertise in bringing the solutions that I've brought forward and your comments about the dedication of board members. So let me thank you. And you have been to board meetings probably as much, if not more than any other person in this community and dedicated your time. and dedicated your time to the Ed Foundation, the BTO and to board meetings. So again, thank you for those comments. The answer to your first question is yes, that the key, in this model, the K to two students who go to either Woodruff or to Mary Kay will stay with their cohorts at either Hughes or Mountain Park through those first five years so that, you know, that kind of half the district will stay together, will stay together. Before, Dr. Could you just kind of maybe briefly comment about the teachers and the teachers' feedback that they had? And before you do that, Liz, although your last statement was, was a comment, let me just comment on that. Thank you for bringing that up. We do realize that we are moving from a model of a couple of years ago where we had courtesy busing for our youngest children. And now we don't have courtesy busing. So I will make sure that our transportation team redouble looks at those numbers and not just by school, but by grade level. And to make sure that we're working, you know, with the traffic safety officers of the police department and also understanding that we now have kindergarten age students who could potentially be, be walking and realizing full well that that's different than a second grader who might be walking to that same school. With that, Dr. Varley, if you can go back and just talk briefly about the feedback from the teachers.
So we had a meeting with the teachers a few weeks ago and shared the scenarios with the teaching staff. Teaching staff, paraprofessionals, et cetera, admin team. And then we sent a survey to the teaching staff for their feedback as well as if this scenario four did happen, what their preferences would be as far as grade level, building, et cetera. And so the feedback has been a little bit of a mixed bag, like let's do it right away. This has needed to happen for years. It's been inequitable. And some like, let's wait a couple of years to, to have it done. So it has been definitely a little mixture. They have asked to have the scenario four, scenario five survey sent to them and I will send it tomorrow, a separate survey to the teaching staff and a survey to the parent population of pre-K to four.
Great. Dr. Varley, thanks. Liz, thanks for your comments this evening. Next up is John Micas. John, good evening.
Good evening, guys. Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to, to meet with the community. Wait, start my video. Oh, hi. Gosh, okay, you can see me. Hi. All right. So some of these comments are astounding, man, you know? I get that you can kind of be objective, but the idea that stakeholders shouldn't be involved in decisions that impact them doesn't exist anywhere else. I mean, I, I gotta be honest with you, New Jersey, and I kind of wrote about this. You probably read it. New Jersey's child mental health system was completely reformed, predicated on the idea that stakeholders not having a voice to systems that impact them led to really bad outcomes. We talk about developmentally, being developmentally appropriate. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I get what that term means. And those opportunities exist in all variety of contexts. You could have developmentally appropriate environments across the board. It depends on how you design the system, right? Now, if honestly, if this thing was a paper, an academic paper that was submitted, what kind of grade do you think you would get? You know, in terms of the references and the material and the arguments that you put forward, there's no contradictory information there. It's biased one way. This is the best way. Si brought up data on K through eight. Look, I don't know. You know, I'm not an expert on that. I like K through eight conceptually. I like K through eight in terms of what I've read about it. I went through a K through eight school, had a decent experience with it. I'm not saying that's the solution, but why isn't that on there, you know? And I get, there's probably logistics and all sorts of things like I, I understand, right? But we also spent $30 million on this like four seasons municipal building that we have in town. That being said, all, all that being said, you know, this doesn't feel like, this does not feel like an objective piece of work. And you can't own the term developmentally appropriate to only mean one solution. That's, you know, that, that doesn't make sense to me. And what, what I find really just disturbing, Dr. Varley, disturbing is this idea that you believe that parents should not have a say at the beginning of a ta, at the ta, at the table in the beginning of a process for significant changes that are going to impact the education of their children. I, I would, I want you to change your mind on that a little bit. I'm not trying to fight you on this. I'd like you to kind of bend a little bit on that. And just kind of think maybe just be a little bit open-minded on how, what the value might be to having parents who have invested interest in these schools. I love my schools here. I want them to succeed as much as you do. I promise you. I promise you that I do. And I promise you that every parent in this town will work with you in getting that done. This process is not great. It's dividing the community. You guys have an opportunity to come back, to fix this, to partner with us. This doesn't have to be as damaging as it has been. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, John. Thank you very much for your comment. He is Dakota. So I just, I just need your first name. I don't know which of you is on this evening.
Dakota Grover, can you hear me?
I can, Dakota. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I am very well. Thanks for joining tonight.
Thanks. Um, I'm a mom of two children, one's in Woodruff, one's in high school. And I'm sitting here listening to this meeting and I listened to the whole entire 10-hour meeting a couple of weeks ago. And I'm absolutely blown away. I'm absolutely, I can't even believe this is happening in Berkeley Heights. I just can't. I don't understand. You have enough people in this community that is upset about this issue that I would think you guys would put the brakes on it for a little bit and say, hey, you know what? There's enough people in the community, there's, that are expressing concerns enough that you have to have town hall meetings. So why wouldn't you put the brakes and say, let's, let's figure this out for you to come, for this Dr. Varley to come and say, most parents cannot be objective. I find that personally offensive. Does she think that I would just vote based on only what's good for my kid and what's not good for the community and my kid's friends and my, and the family of community we have? That's offensive. And being objective, you're not, you guys aren't being objective. You're being bullies. You are literally giving us option four and five, which is the same thing. We want you to do it our way now, or we want you to do it our way now, a year from now. There is absolutely, this is not giving the community a vote. This is a survey of, do you like my opinion here or would you like my opinion inserted later? It's mind blowing to me. I don't even know how to express the, the anger that I have over the community being completely divided this time. We have enough stuff going on in the world today with COVID, with our children being homeschooled, with us having to work from home because we can't, because you guys decide to close the school every time it sprinkles snow out. We have enough stuff going on. The kids have been through enough and you guys are sitting here telling us that you have all these paperwork and all these, you know, experts saying this and that. What about that psychiatrist that was a mother last week? She's an expert. I think she's an expert. And she said, this is damaging to our children right now. This is not okay. And you guys are saying, oh, but we're objective and it is okay. You have to do what we say. That is, you basically are essentially bullying the entire community into voting on something that is the same option. You're not even considering putting another option on and you're throwing up all these terms and expert things. And but from what I've heard in the last two meetings, you guys are very, very good at avoiding a direct question. Somebody will ask you a direct question and you'll give us a statistic or a number or something, but you won't answer the question. Now, you have a lot of passionate parents out there, very, you know, we, I talked to you personally, my husband and I did, and we was amazed at how great the school board handled the COVID situation and all these things. But you are totally destroying your reputation and dividing the community by not essentially caring about what we have to say. You're basically saying, it's your kids, it's your taxes, it's your vote, but we make the decision and you have to live with it, tough cookie. And I do not like that. So my one question to you, I guess, throughout this rant that I just had, is what is your hurry? Why are you forcing this survey and forcing this through when you see that you're having an uprise in the community of people not happy with what you're making? What the decision that you and the school board are making for us? So what is the hurry? And don't tell me it's full day kindergarten because you already said that wasn't a problem. You can put them anywhere. You can put them in the YMCA building. You can disperse kindergarten. You only need four classes. So it's not full day kindergarten. You can't say, we've been working on this for years. What is the hurry that you have to push this through so quickly that you can't hear anything the community has to say except for these last minute, really quick meetings that you're having to hear everybody's opinion and avoid answering questions? What is the hurry? Why can you guys not put a pause on this and say, you know what? We need to hear from the community and from the parents and from the people who pay taxes in this town and vote us in these positions. And my last comment is, I'm very shocked that the other school board members won't speak. The reason why we ask other school board members question not what your scripted answers are. That's the end. That's all I have.
Great, Dakota. Thank you for your comments and, and for your question. So your one question was, was why hurry? This is, as some people have already indicated tonight, this is a process that has gone on for quite some time. Some people indicated how long this has gone on and we have talked about us getting to full day kindergarten for, for quite some time. And this is the year that we're ready for it. We, we did a pilot this year, we talked about it for quite some time. And this is the time that we're doing it. We do understand that implementing full day kindergarten does come with some realignment of, of our schools. We understand that that has impacts. So the answer to your is why now is we're ready. We've waited for a long time to do this. We know the benefits of early childhood education and our school board is ready to make that decision.
My question is, why full day kindergarten? My question is, why are you pushing redistricting now? You've already stated that full day kindergarten is going to happen this year. We're all for it. Everyone, I think in the community thinks it's great. It's the redistricting. Why are you pushing the changing of the schools so quickly?
So the realignment, the answer is the realignment of, of our schools is required for us to do full day kindergarten. I know that there are other conceptual scenarios. I've had a conversation with you about those. But the recommended option to improve our early childhood education is to put in K to two, three to five schools, which involves a realignment of our schools and also gives us full day kindergarten. And that's why we're doing it now.
That's why you're pushing it so quickly.
And I just told you why. Again, thank you for your question. Erin Seidey is the next person I see.
Hi Doug, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, Erin. Good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm doing well, thanks. How are you?
I am very well, thanks.
Good. So I have basically three questions and some of it builds on some things that some of the other parents have talked about tonight. So how will the feedback heard tonight impact decision-making if you're unequivocally saying no to any additional options? Second question would be, does the 20% impacted under option four include first graders? Half of the first grade, I'm sorry, first grade class that will have to change schools twice in two years? And then thirdly, I did have the opportunity to speak with Dr. Varley earlier today. And I had some follow-up questions based on my conversation with her. I spoke with her a lot about the data that was used to formulate option four. And I did see that she had added some additional information to the FAQ page, which I reviewed. The one study that was on there previously is almost 20 years old and is from a school district in Alaska. Secondly, the National Association of Elementary School Principals Guide that was added today. I did look at that. There were six highlighted schools as being kind of setting the bar for early childhood education. I looked at those schools. Of the six, only one follows the pre-K to two format. The other schools varied from K to five, K to six, K to eight, which just shows that you can have developmentally appropriate early childhood education despite the physical building structure. So I don't see how the data that has been presented to the public is really supporting the whole reconfiguring of the school buildings in this way. It supports early childhood education and how to have developmentally appropriate early childhood education. But it is showing the data itself that the district is publishing is showing that that can happen no matter what the buildings are configured like. So I would like to know, you know, she mentioned in my conversation with her today that were, there were three studies that were used. I, I have not seen those three studies. I've just seen the one and the guide that was published, which I, which I just spoke about. So based on what has been shared, I don't see a preponderance of evidence supporting this. Thank you.
Erin, thanks for your question. I'll let Dr. Varley answer your third question about the research and the different studies that are in the FAQs. Answer the first two in reverse order. Your second question about the 20%, does that include students who will have to change twice? The answer that is yes, that is part of the calculation. To your first question, with the feedback that it gets in its decision-making process, that's not a specific easy one to answer. Obviously, the board presented the, the presentation last Thursday, Thursday night. We got a great deal of feedback that night at the meeting. Additionally, we've gotten a lot of feedback before then. It's not just people who speak at board meetings. Dr. Varley and I have been on the phone with many parents and responded to many emails from people, some people who are not comfortable speaking at a board meeting, who wanted to give us their feedback. And their feedback and many of them have written to all board members as well. It's not, it's not that they just write to myself and, and Dr. Varley. So we do get a lot of feedback. Onto your specific question, you know, did we get, have we gotten feedback? Are we going to add scenario three? The answer to that is, the answer to that is no. We have made a decision as, as a board that we are going to, that the superintendent has recommended an educationally sound solution for us, which is the K to, K to two, three to five structure. There are two different ways to, to implement that. And that is the survey that's going out to the parents. But we're, we're always taking feedback from people. And I, I, I fully understand that when people give us feedback and we don't necessarily act on that feedback, I understand that there's a frustration or even a perception that, oh, they're not listening to us. I can assure you, and I'll just speak for myself specifically for as long as I've been doing this job. I take the feedback from this community very seriously. I've talked to a lot of people who disagree with the board's decision and even my own feelings about that on a variety of things and not just on the topic we're talking about right, right now. So I do take the feedback very seriously. That, that doesn't mean that the board will always act in a specific way that will include that feedback. In this case, the sur, the survey will have scenarios four and five. So to your third question, Dr. Varley, can you talk about the research? I know she talks about the N E P.
Yeah. So if you read and in that document, while it does show those six schools, it does discuss that pre-K to three is the best option for early childhood education. And if you know in certification, that is the way teachers are certified. That is the way the New Jersey standards are laid out. They're laid out K to two and Teachers College recommends K to two, three to five. The studies that we discussed were the, let me find them real quick. We had the Norwood study, the school first study, and then the information by Baker from Boston College. So those are the three main ones that we have gone about, but we did today, we were sent the, the National Association of Prince, Elementary School Principals information, which does align with pre-K to three.
Okay, Dr. Varley, thank you very much for that. Erin, thank you for your questions. Next person is Lee Timmerman. Lee, good evening. How are you tonight?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. I want to second the comments that Liz Kane made for the board and for the administration. I think professionalism is great. I think the board is dedicated, but I also want to emphasize her last comment about busing. I think the board, and I think this is more of a board issue than it is an administration issue. The board should look at courtesy busing for at least the kindergartens, if not the K through two schools. I really believe having picked up grandkids at Mary Kay McMillan over the years and four of them over the years, that is just, it's a horrendous parking issue, horrendous traffic issue. And to think about us adding Woodruff to that mix, I think it's just going to be a big problem for the traffic issue. And if I think about my children driving kids to school, they're going to have to go to two, maybe three schools in the short timeframe to take their kids to school. I just can't imagine the traffic problems we're going to have because they're not going to be within walking distance. So the walking is out. So it's just really something I think the board needs to take a look at. I understand that from what I see, the savings, the transportation savings is highly driven by the fact that we're cutting out courtesy busing. It's not It's not anything else. It's all the kindergarten and first grade that we're saving busing. I think we should take a second, you folks should take a second look at that and see whether courtesy busing should go forward. If not K, then K one, if not K, K one, K two. I just think it's something you should be doing at the younger grades. Just a comment.
Great, Lee. Thank you very much for your comment. First of all, thank you for the support for both the Board of Ed and the administration, the dedication. We do greatly appreciate. I answered one of the earlier parents, I think it was Liz Kane, I think you, I made a note of that. I think you're right. I think we do need to make sure that even though we talk to our traffic safety officers and we have crossing guards. You're right, we need to look at the age appropriate of a kindergartner. It sounds like you've had some wonderful experiences with your kindergarteners. So, so you, so you would know. But I will, I will make a note and we will double check on that. You're right, we have had courtesy busing. It's something we've had for a long time. We did end it with COVID, the busing challenges that we had, and I'll make sure that we do a double check on that. So Lee, thank you very much for your comment. Todd and Jerry, and Todd, good evening. How are you tonight?
Good, good evening Doug. Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to say that I appreciated last, at the last board meeting, the direct responses from the board members. And I'm kind of a little shocked that now there's a law in place that prevents that. So I think that's really unfortunate. You know, I appreciate what's being said and I've kind of tried to formulate my thoughts this evening based on a lot of different things that are, that are coming out. And therefore, I just, there's, I have a few comments and a few questions. You know, you say you're taking feedback, but frankly, you're not. Taking feedback means that you would actually be willing to do something with it, not only listening and hearing it. So the feedback you're receiving, which I do support, is adding scenario three. So I know you've already answered, but I think it's important that a significant number of the community is asking for this to happen. I don't understand why you're not willing to take that feedback. To claim that this year's FDK was a proper pilot year, I think is a farce. The kids were in school for five days, only for a half day. So, you know, I understand that we're moving ahead with full day kindergarten and I support that. But I don't support the method in which it's being applied. So you've acknowledged that there's no budget figures presented for each scenario. There's got to be some cost for it, right? It should be itemized and provided. It's troubling to read in the superintendent's frequently asked questions that the board found a new way to finance, yet previously, just a few months back, October, a referendum was required. So why the shift? The optics suggests that you're just trying to avoid a public vote. Can you please respond and provide insight as to why the change? And was this change validated by all the board to use reserve funds and not a referendum? There are 420 signatures on the petition and growing, actually over 420. I hope you're taking note that that represents almost 3% of the voting public in town. Do you care about this? What is that kind of feedback to you? I've done my research and there are only 43 schools in New Jersey that I could find that are organized three to five. There are approximately 1,292 schools that have a third grade. In 2018, 2019, 2,000 schools. So this equates to roughly 3.3% of the state in the first figure and 2.1% in the second figure. So why is it so important that we follow only what 43 schools are doing here in the state? You say that others are, hmm, that number is a pretty small percentage. What evaluation has been done on students' mental health following the pandemic? I'm sure there is, there isn't a study that will say the impact for a child to move schools after a pandemic. You're ignoring our children's wellbeing by forging ahead with this. I would also like to share and to clarify, teachers were not asked on a survey what they thought and which option they preferred. The teachers were given two questions following the Zoom on the Thursday, which started at 2:30 PM. That said the following, one, which grades, or sorry, do you prefer your current school or your current grade? Which grades would you want? Which three grades would you want to teach? So how do you consider that taking teacher feedback? So I have a question. Are you willing to do the right thing? Are you willing to listen to the community to serve? Find a way for FDK next year. Implement scenario three. Let's wait two to three years, really see the impact of the new housing units to say we understand that now at this time. Again, another total farce. If we need to make a major change, do it with the community involved and with time, not following a pandemic. I mean, again, so many have said, what is the rush to do this now? We can still add full day kindergarten. This seems to be politically driven and that's a shame. These are kids' lives, our community, and you are disregarding this. Think for one moment, the board going into the years can come, can say, we listened, we we decided to teach the community properly for a longer period as we realize the impact of this decision is far and wide. That is a platform the community can get behind for years to come. You may say it's complicated. Well, it is, and that's the point. But too complicated for a rushed decision and complicated enough to do it right and pause. Thank you.
Great, Todd. Thanks for your comments. Let me, I think you have a couple of questions in there. Let me see if I can pull them out. The first one had to do with the change, the change for the costing of the, of the construction of the bathrooms from the referendum to our capital reserve. And, and you're correct, our initial plan was to have full day kindergarten as part of the, as part of the referendum. When we, when we paused and decided as a board to not go forward with referendum. Obviously, that impacted our plans for full day kindergarten. We did come up with another way to finance that out of our, out of our capital reserve. It was not to avoid a vote like, like, like you indicated that it was, just to give you some perspective. The referendum cost, the total reference, the projects in the referendum was approximately $8 million. And the cost of the kindergarten bathrooms was about $500,000. So full day kindergarten was only a very, very small component of the referendum. And yes, given how important we thought full day kindergarten was, we did come up with another way to finance that out of our capital reserve. Your second question was about the 43, 43 schools. I'm going to hold off on that second, that question for a second. Dr. Varley just stepped away for a second. I'll let her come back and answer that. You're correct. Obviously, there is no study about mental health. I think that was more of a comment post pandemic. You are correct. Your assessment of what was done for teacher feedback, you're, you're right. There was a presentation to the teachers. The teachers were given an opportunity to provide feedback at that meeting. Some of the, some of, some of them did at that meeting. Some of them contacted Dr. Varley after the meeting. Or uncomfortable speaking at that meeting, but contacted her afterwards. But yes, you're correct. The questions that you asked that were correct. So I'll come back to her. I'm going to move on. Todd, I'll come back. I promise you, we'll answer the question about the 43 schools. You did make a comment about the petition and you gave up percentages of people that have signed the petition. I'm not going to challenge those other than to say the petition was sent to, to the board. And although I didn't count them, there were also a fair number of signatures on a petition for people who are outside of, outside of Berkeley Heights. So I would encourage you, I don't know if your numbers accounted for just the people in Berkeley Heights or the total number of the online survey. But I'll come back to you on that. Next up is Megan Diaz. Megan, good evening.
Hi Doug, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear. Good evening.
Hi, so I just wanted to know if the board, sorry, if the board envisions one plan working better than the other one for the special needs community. Does one plan maybe allow for improvements or expansions to the current programming provided by special services? And an example of what I'm talking about is, you know, we keep talking about more space being available in the buildings. Have we considered adding anything like a sensory room to the schools similar to the one that GL already has? And if we're talking about staffing changes, does that allow for any kind of additional therapists to be hired or more space in inclusion classrooms? So overall, really, just how were the children receiving special services considered during the planning process? And was any money that was already budgeted for special services taken and put towards the full day kindergarten programming?
Great, Megan, was that your only question?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Dr. Varley, I'll repeat that question.
I'm gonna, can we promote Michelle Gardner?
Yeah. Mike Scara, can you promote Michelle Gardner?
On it right away.
Thank you. And Melissa, after we get Michelle on, I promised Todd you would come back and answer the question about the 43 districts that are doing that. I promised him an answer for that. Let me just wait for Michelle Gardner.
I think I'm on.
You are Michelle Gardner. Good evening. For those who don't know, Michelle Gardner is our highly acclaimed Director of Special Education, who recently got an award for all that she has done in special education, a very challenging part of our school curriculum that she and her staff work on. So Michelle, can you answer Megan's question for us?
Sure. And I think I outlined it a little bit in the, in the link in Dr. Varley's update. But, you know, we've been a part of the discussions for K and bonding some of the barriers and capacity issues over the last several years. And, you know, what we see is a restructuring to the, what is scenario four really does allow us to use our special education teachers and our therapists and our child study team members in a way that appears to be more effective and efficient. And we are able to more reasonably distribute students among the schools and allocate resources in a way that, that, you know, we feel is effective. But at the end of the day, you know, special services, related services, all of the supports that we provide students with disabilities will be provided regardless of how schools are structured, because that is our legal requirement and our, and the right of our students with disabilities. So, you know, we, we feel that we have a lot more flexibility as a department by restructuring the, the school buildings.
Great, Michelle. Thank you very much for your question, Megan, for your answer and Megan for your question. Damian Facy, I see you next, Damian. Good evening.
Hi, this, I have to start my video. I don't want to be on video. Oh gosh.
That's okay. That's okay. So.
It's Toya. So.
Right, this is not Damian. This is Toya Facy. Toya, good evening.
Hello.
I turned it off.
It's okay. I'm glad I look better than I thought. So first, I would like to say that I know that in the past that myself, as a parent in the, in the district that I have not seen eye to eye with the Board of Ed on, on some pretty key topics and I've been very vocal about it. The first thing that I want to do is I do want to thank the Board of Ed for having these town halls, because I do see it as a step in the right direction. So my hope is that going forward, as key decisions are being assessed, that you, the Board of Ed will continue these kinds of town halls so that you can hear what parent feedback is. So thank you for that and having these town halls. My first question is because I keep hearing kind of the same comments, just out of curiosity, is the Board of Ed, the way that you guys handle your meetings, is it under the Roberts rules of order? Doug is on mute.
Sorry, Toya, was that your only question?
No, I have another one.
Keep going. Just, I'll take all your questions at once.
So that, so that's the first one. The second one is if, if, if you guys can just outline, maybe it's Dr. Varley to outline, just so that I can really truly understand, what are the inequities across the school? Like I know size is one, but are there any other inequities at the, at the various elementary? Seems like it's mostly the elementary schools. This is where the reconfiguration is happening. What are some of those inequities, just so that I have a good understanding of what those are? Having two kids who's, who've gone through the system already and two who are still in there. And then the last one is just a comment. I am glad to hear that there have been some considerations for children in the district who are getting special services. That was one of my questions, to make sure that we were not leaving those students out and that it was being considered and we were being sensitive to the changes that could impact them. So I do, I do appreciate hearing Michelle Gardner talk about what this means and what that impact is. So that's it.
Great, Toya. Thanks for your comments and questions. Thank you for the support. We also think that these town halls are good, are good ideas to get additional feedback and answer questions. In terms of what governs the school board meeting, the school board meeting is governed by two things. There's New Jersey state law that governs what it is. I don't have the exact statute for you, but I certainly can get it for you tomorrow. There's a number of items that we have to comply with regarding when we conduct the meetings, how often they are, what we have to follow, what has to be included in that. And then additionally, we have a set of policies that is within the Board of Education about how we conduct, how we conduct the meetings. So I don't think we necessarily per se follow Roberts rules of order, but we are bound by New Jersey state law and our own internal policies. And Dr. Varley, I'll let you answer this question. This has come up a number of times to talk about, you know, the different inequities that we have today and how what we're proposing addresses some of those inequities.
So we have, and we know, we know we have inequitable services across preschool to fifth grade schools. We hired our Director of Elementary and were taught at some schools and not taught at others. And we have others that we need to address through realigning. Right now, we have 330 students who are served by 1.4 reading specialists and 177 students who are served by one reading specialist. So we know, based on basic math, we know that those 330 students do not get the same services as those 177. The same goes for our counselors, our school psychologists, our CST. And we need to balance so that we can provide equity and have our principals service the same amount or close to it of families, teachers and students.
Great, Dr. Varley, thank you very much. Next person is Tom Farquhar. Tom, good evening.
Thank you, Doug. I have a number of very specific questions. I'll just go through them quickly. I'm not going to start video.
That's okay.
I'll do it later.
That's okay.
All right. Now you threw me off here. Just let me go back to my list. All right. First question is, your budget enrollment numbers show, this is for your 20, 21, 22 budget show 1,018 elementary students. But your April 18th presentation used a value of 1,027 students. Why are the two enrollment numbers different between the budget submission and the April 8th presentation? Second question is, since the utilization is under 85% in scenario three, why would you claim overcrowding? Third question, why is it acceptable to operate at 51% utilization for Woodruff in scenario five, which is one of your favorite scenarios? Third question, what am I, question four, does the board trust the people at reports to represent enough to hold a referendum on all feasible scenarios, including scenario three? Fourth question. Now I looked at your capacity numbers as given in your April 8th presentation. There's also a 2017 report that looked at, could you handle all of the new students coming in through the, from the developments? The capacity in the elementary schools increased by 84 students since the 2017 reports. Why is that? Scenario four, another one of your favorites, is that there is an average class size of 25.1 at Hughes. Do you agree that's correct? And why is that? That seems to be rather large. Now, I hate to say this, but I agree with Todd. It appears that the administration and perhaps the board are using what is called a cram down approach to full day kindergarten. That is, the decision has been made before any public input and certain criteria are being used to exclude reasonable options from consideration. That's cram down. Why does the board want to use this cram down approach? Next question, the April 8th presentation says that there is quote insufficient classroom space to implement full day kindergarten within our current school configuration. But the utilization numbers do not support this claim. First, they have not provided enrollments for days kindergarten scenarios for each school. That needs to be shown. Second, scenario two is a pre K and full day kindergarten at, full day kindergarten at Mary Kay McMillan and one to five at the other elementary schools. Under this scenario, the max utilization is 100% at Hughes. But that is using the capacity of 320 as given in the April 18th, April 8th presentation. The true capacity may be 130 as given in the 2017 report. Nothing has been said about this change. Well, why it changed, why it changed? Did the capacity at Hughes decrease in order to claim not enough space in scenario two? Did the capacity at Hughes decrease in order to claim not enough space in Scenario 2? Third, Scenario 3 makes a change to Scenario 2 to bus Murray Hill area students to Woodruff instead of Hughes. With that change, one can have full day kindergarten and pre-K at Mary Kay McMillan and 1 to 5 at the other elementary schools, and the max utilization rate drops to 84% at Hughes, even with the artificially low
Tom, thanks for your questions. Tom, if you could email those questions to myself and to, to Dr. Varley. I wrote down all your questions, but I don't feel comfortable, nor do I think anybody on our staff can kind of follow all of those items. I think we can do a much better job in responding to your questions very specifically. And I, but if you could.
Why are you using, what, do you, does the Board trust the people?
Yeah.
That you represent enough to hold a referendum on all feasible scenarios?
So.
People are the best judge of what they want for their kids, not some administrator. Okay. You need to listen to the people here.
So I would.
It's good that you're holding these hearings.
And so you're, you're right. We are, I would agree with you that we do need to listen to the people, which is why, in this case, we've scheduled these two additional town halls. And the answer is, the answer is a formidable, yes, we do trust the people. We do trust the people. Trusting the people does not mean that we should hold a referendum, which is a, a very formal process to go through where we're getting, you know, every person in the community have input. So the answer is, yes, we do trust the parents. We trust them in a, in a lot of different ways where they've given us input. But I would not equate whether we trust them or not to whether we would go ahead and do a referendum. So Tom, send us the rest of your questions, and I assure you, we'll get back to you as quickly as we can on that. And thanks for your feedback. The next question, next person I see after Tom is Caroline F. Caroline, if you'll just give us your last name.
Hi, actually, it's Caroline McGuess.
Oh, Caroline Megas. Okay, I got it. Okay. Caroline Megas, Caroline, good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys?
We're well. Thank you for joining.
Good. I just had a couple of comments, a couple of questions as well. But I know a lot of the research that was given, a lot was older research. I think the one that was on the first FAQ was a school in Alaska, which, you know, conceivably really has nothing in common with Berkeley Heights. You know, let's look at the graduation rates in Alaska. Like, there's so many differences that I'm not sure that can even equate to any comparability to Berkeley Heights. But besides for, you know, looking at research to support the configuration that's being so pushed by the Board, I just was researching for, you know, what is the best? You know, if, if I can find enough research to support that this configuration that the Board and Dr. Varley want so badly are, are, is the best thing for my kids, then I'm 100% behind it. But in all the research that I see is, it's inconclusive. So the only thing that the research conclusively supports, that is long-term research, is that a K through 8 is the most beneficial for children. They learn from each other. They have the buddy system between the older and younger children that are very helpful for development. The research also that is not inconclusive is that the more transitions that a child makes in their school career decreases their academic, is emotionally damaging. You know, so I'm not sure why that's not also being considered. The other thing I just want to mention is when people say, why are you doing this so fast? And why are you trying, you know, why can't we slow this down, stop and pause? The response is always, oh, we've been talking about this for years. But the problem is, is that the plan wasn't even ready in February. So you've been talking about it for years, but there's no plan as of two, three months ago. So really, we haven't been talking about how to make this happen. And there's many ways to fit pay through, to fit a full day kindergarten, which would definitely be beneficial to the community, whether you have a kindergarten or not. You know, I see that as a definite value add to our school system. You know, and so I guess that's my plan, you know, those are my comments. But I'd also like to know how your response can be that we've been talking about it for years, but you yourself has commented several times that, you know, you wanted to make the announcement so that people wouldn't lose money on down payments, but you didn't have a plan to share yet. And that's it.
Great, Caroline. Thank you for your comments. You are, you are correct. For the first half of your statement, I did make that announcement at the meeting. And that was one of the reasons why we did announce it in February. Yes, on Feb, when I made that announcement in February, we did it so we made sure that people didn't lose their deposits. But no, we did not have a fully, a fully articulated plan that we could present to the public. Our plans were in the works. We have been working on this for quite some time. So to say that we had no plan in February is just not an accurate statement. We're building our, we're building our plan.
Hello?
So, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. So we're, we're building, we're building our plan. And then obviously, it took time to make sure we could articulate it, include enough of the scenarios. And yes, it took us until, until April 8th, until we, we were ready and we had a plan that we could articulate and give you the options. And obviously, set up a process for parents to give feedback. But you're right. We, we did announce it with a reason, with a specific reason in mind, and we have been building our plan over time. So thank you for your, for your comments this evening. Next person up is Cara LeBlond. Cara, good evening.
Hello. My, I guess I have one comment and then I have a question. And I'm a special ed teacher in Union, and I teach in a pre-K to 4 building. And, you know, all the kids really do get along and it, it, sorry, I'll start my video. It really is like a family. We have a buddy system like the woman before was talking about. The kids go in and out of each classroom. So it really does have a sense of community. And I like that. And I liked, my son, my oldest goes to Woodruff, and I like that about Woodruff. It is a smaller school, but they have a bigger sense of community and family. And I want to know, it seems through all of this, it seems like the Woodruff School District, or like the Woodruff School area is the one that's going to be most impacted. I know there's only one other town hall meeting, but are you planning to talk to the parents of those students who seem to be the most impacted? You know, a lot of us feel kind of left out, kind of blindsided by this whole decision. And I, I just, that's my question. You know, it kills me that my oldest son, who'll be going into fifth next year, might not be able to have his fifth grade at Woodruff, and that my youngest might not even go to Woodruff, who's in first grade. So that's my question. If you're planning to talk to the parents of the schools that are greatly impacted.
Great. Cara, thanks for your question. Obviously, anybody is welcome to have come to the last meeting and to this, to this meeting, and of course, to our next meeting. When, when the superintendent eventually makes a recommendation and, and the Board eventually votes on that, and we have a going forward plan, we will additionally have specific meetings for the people who are impacted by this. And we've talked about them in the presentation. We know different grades and different neighborhoods are impacted in different ways. So the answer is yes, we will have additional communications. I indicate that a little bit more in, in the transition I talked about previously. And we, we know that this is impactful. We understand that some people have additional trends, transitions. We have worked to minimize the transitions. Let me come back to one thing that you said. I think you just said that you had a fourth grader at, at Woodruff. I just want to be clear. Your fourth grade student will have the option to stay at Woodruff for his fifth grade year. So.
I know, I, I know that.
Just want to make sure that you understood that that's one of the ways that we've minimized the transitions, that, that, that he will have the option to stay there.
But if his friends all decide to go to another school, then he's going to want to go with them. Like, I understand that was put in there, and I know that that's another way that you're trying to compromise on the redistricting. But, you know, he's been with those students since second grade. So, you know, you might have some staying, you might have some leaving. It's not going to be the same. And I understand that. It just seems that, you know, Woodruff is the one that, that seems to be getting kind of the raw end of this redistricting deal. And I know the reasons why. And, you know, when I, when my student, when my son was younger, I really wanted a full day kindergarten program here, but you didn't have one, so I had to look elsewhere. So, you know, I understand the families who are looking for a full day kindergarten. That's very important. But it seems that that's at the expense of the other families in the district. So, and that, that's all.
Cara, thanks for your comment. And I, I do understand your comment about the different friends. So thank you for your comment. Dawn Bernstein, I see you next. Dawn, good evening.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I do have a couple of, of questions. Um, I wanted to say, Doug, I know that in the past, we've spoken several times, and, and I, I heard you mention that you feel, that you, you said you always listen. And, and I know that in the past, that has been the case. I always did feel that way when I spoke with you. And so I wanted to express that, and, and thank you for the time that you have always spent listening. And let you know that that's why I think, for me, I, I'm very surprised right now, because I feel a change. I feel that there's been a shift. And I've never quite, I never quite felt this way before. I always felt that, that families were heard for the most part, when, when they took the time to reach out. And listening, you know, to earlier people who are speaking earlier, in particular, one, one lady named Dakota. She mentioned a feeling of not caring. And, and I can attest that there is that feeling, that feeling of, of just not caring. And then hearing Dr. Varley speak, when she, when she mentioned that, you know, the importance of taking emotion out of the equation. And I, I just like to point out, I think that that's why. I think that parents can feel that emotion is being taken out of the equation. And when you're talking about education and families, while I understand it's important to be objective, and I know another parent pointed out feeling personally insulted by that, because I, for one, also agree that I feel that I am able to be objective. In fact, you know, in my case, I'm more speaking out for parents who are more affected than, than my family, though my family will be affected, not in the way that other parents are. So I'm being objective in that sense. And so, you know, the feeling of taking emotion out of the equation, based on the assumption that, that families are not able to be objective, is, is, is hurtful. And also just a new feeling, something that I haven't experienced in the past when, when talking with district leaders. Couple of questions. One was that you mentioned that realignment is required for full day K. If that's the case, then how come there was no BOE vote on full day K? You mentioned that there was no vote, there was no referendum, because it was very expensive. I mean, in my opinion, I feel like the town should be able to have a say in how they want to spend their money. You know, I, for one, would be willing to, you know, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but, but that's something that the town might have a say, want to have a say in. But if there's no referendum, and you mentioned that that's, I think you use, I think you said $8 million. So I'm not sure where that number comes from, and, and I don't know, but perhaps a clarification on that. And, and if there's not time to go into that, maybe person, you know, one-on-one that could take place. But also, why then not a BOE vote? Why, why, why? I, I don't understand that, because it seems like full day K was, if, if that's what this is about, then how come there was no vote on that? And there's only the vote on redistricting. Another question is, and this is a personal emotional question, if you will, because children, when you're, when you're, when you're working with children, emotions do matter. So I would like to know what, what you would say to a child who would be impacted by redistricting. You know, a child who would be particularly upset by that, what you would say to that child? And also, is there anything anyone can say that would change your thinking on redistricting? And if so, what would it be?
Dawn, thanks for your questions. Before I get into your questions, Melissa, I have forgotten to answer Todd Najarian's questions about the 43 districts, and somebody just reminded me about that. So thank you, Robert, for reminding me of that. I'm balancing a lot of things. So we're going to answer Dawn's questions, and then Melissa, we're going to come back to Todd's about the 43 questions. We'll come back to that. Thank you. So let's see, for your, for your questions. Your first one was about, was about the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed vote. The Board of Ed has not voted on full day kindergarten yet. The Board of Ed will vote on full day kindergarten at its April 29th meeting. The Board of Ed was involved in the discussion back in October, when we decided to pause the refer, pause referendum. We're very clear at that time that full day kindergarten the discussion in, in the first week in February, when we decided to bring it back. However, the vote on what we do for the kindergarten is on April 29th, and that's when the Board will vote. Like, my comment about the referendum, if you go back and pull any of the referendum stuff off the website, there was a whole set of initiatives in the referendum that included a, a number of things around facility items as well as media centers, as well as STEM labs and FDK. And the total cost of that was approximately $8 million. And I was just giving that in context of how much of the full day kindergarten was a part of that referendum. And if you can't find that, Dawn, I'm happy to send you the presentation on the referendum. Your third question was, what would I say to my child if my child was in one of those impacted areas? I think I would try to frame it as an opportunity. This is an opportunity to potentially be with, with, with new friends. Depending on the grade, and I would have to understand the specific age of, of my child. And I would remind them that their local, their local neighborhood, wherever you are, that local neighborhood will be traveling with you. So even if you are a young child who's changing schools, and you might be displaced from some of your friends in whatever grade level you're at, I would remind them that it's an opportunity to see a, a new building, get a new playground, and that their local friends, the ones on their neighborhood, on their block, potentially the ones that they play with more often, or most often, would be the ones that are there. And I would try to do that as positively as opportunities I can. I believe that children are very resilient, and if it's framed properly from a parent, I think it'd help them with the transition. Your question is a little bit of a hypothetical one. What would change my own personal mind about that? I've changed my mind many times on Board of Ed related, related matters. Some, Dawn, as you know, I've talked with you about a number of items, and I've, I've been swayed a number of times by people in, in the community who've made very sound arguments for a number of items that have come before the Board. I can't tell you in this case what specifically would, 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 would change my mind, because there are a lot of factors that are involved. Would my mind be changed for a different neighborhood? Could my mind be changed to a different scenario? Could my mind be changed on, on the timing? There are potentially a lot of different, different ones. But I can tell you that I've listened to a lot of feedback over the year, and my mind has been changed. In fact, some of the positions that I have felt on the Board have been influenced by some of the very people who are on this call tonight, who I've talked with a, a number of times. So I feel that, and, and I thank you, you, you indicated being that, that I do spend a lot of time listening and talking with parents. I do think it's something that I take very seriously, and it has influenced my opinion. So thank you, Dawn, for your questions. Dr. Varley, if we can go back to Todd's question, let me just quickly look back at my notes. I believe his question was, there were only 43 schools, and I don't recall, Todd, if you said it was in New Jersey or not, that are doing this. And why do we feel that we're doing this if such only a small number of those schools are doing it?
All right. So we know that towns build schools or school districts are built, and they're built to last. So school buildings are built, and they last for many, many years. And you won't see school districts set this up unless they have, are building new buildings. And we know how much that can cost. We currently have very old buildings. However, we have the capacity to do best practice and be developmentally appropriate. Many districts do not redistrict or realign because they don't have the option to do so. We have that option, and we have the ability to give our future students and our current students the specialized learning that they deserve.
Great. Dr. Varley, thank you. The next person is, oh, here she is, Renee. And Renee, I think it's Renee Sisla. Renee, did I get your name right?
Yes. Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Good evening. Thanks for joining.
Let me try to video myself if I can. But, okay, let's not waste that time. So I appreciate the town hall tonight. I'm, I'm certain that the Board of Ed agreed that this is a huge project. I also recognize that Board of Ed is highly credentialed and that they recognize that. they recognize that stakeholder feedback is key in successful change management. Although the last couple of meetings, I have not seen that happen. Hence my questions. So Mr. Reinstein, my questions are as follows. Why are all parents with school-aged children not considered as stakeholders and surveyed? Why are all taxpayers not why are all teachers not considered as stakeholders not surveyed? And my God, why are our children not considered as key stakeholders and not asked for their opinion as anyone on the board asked our kids how they feel about these plans? And why is the pandemic not considered?
Great, Renee, thanks for your questions. Let's write that last one down, pandemic. So your first, let me take them in order. You obviously mentioned a different number of groups. Why are we not considered stakeholders and are input being considered? The answer to that is your input is considered. That's why we have the April eighth meeting. That's why I have two town hall meetings. We're doing it so your input is considered so we can answer questions. And this, this meeting is solely for the purpose of having stakeholder input. As far as the community members, obviously the community members are are welcome to come to any of these meetings. It's been advertised so people could come to meeting. I think what's behind your vote potentially is, you know, should the community members potentially indicate their preference? We felt as a district that the people who had the most say and who were the primary stakeholders of this are the parents of pre-K four-year-olds. So it is that group, is that group, excuse me, who will get a chance to indicate their preference on the scenarios. So they are the primary stakeholders. Dr. Varley indicated earlier this evening that the teachers will also be sent a separate survey. So their, their preferences will be indicated as well. And I would say to answer your question about the students, typically when we deal with student issues, which of course we deal with all the time, our general approach is for elementary school matters, we direct all the feedback from the parents as those are obviously our youngest children. At times we have surveyed and talked to our middle school students and very often our high school students when we want to survey them for a variety of different matters. But I would say directionally, we do not survey our youngest kids and we let their parents do that. In terms of your last question, has the pandemic been considered this? Yes, it's an absolute yes. We are, we are doing that. And in fact, one of the, one of the, one of the reasons why scenario four and scenario five are in there and they obviously have two different rollouts is we've heard a lot of feedback from parents of that, of that this shouldn't be done in September of this year. We should wait for the realignment of our schools until children are back to school. They're quote, more stable is a word that people use. And one of the reasons scenario five is in there is for that exact reason because because people feel it should not be done in the first year. So we are responsive to the pandemic. And there are some people who've told us that they support scenario four for that pandemic response reason as well in that they want to get kids back and they want to get all the changes done at once and get that done. So the answer is yes, the pandemic ones have been responded to. Let me just answer. So thank you, Renee, for your questions. I see two questions in the chat. I'm going to respond to one person that said, we didn't fully answer Megan Diaz's question about was special education budget being cut and did that money go towards full day kindergarten? Absolutely not. There was no cut at all to, to special education. We do what we need to do for special education and there was no cut in that budget. The second question was, can you please clarify what does it mean to give fifth graders an option to stay at Woodruff under option four? Will be up to the parents discretion to keep them at Woodruff or send them to Hughes? The answer is yes, it will be parent discretion for those students who are impacted. Those parents will get an additional communication and they will get to decide what they want to do with that student. The next person I see is Sandy Francisco. Sandy, good evening. How are you tonight?
Mr. Reinstein.
I'm trying to just manage technology here. Oh, the host has disabled video. Okay. Can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear. Good evening.
Great. Good evening. So just, I know that everyone has an opinion. I really just want to, you know, kind of state some of the more quiet opinions that aren't as vocal. So as a mom who has a kindergartner and a first grader, I had one who went through private full day kindergarten, another one who is in Berkeley Heights, and I can say there's a huge difference and I'm not going to be in it, but my kids are both remote at this point because having them go in for two days a week, one week and three days the next just isn't a viable option, isn't stable, isn't easy for me to maneuver and still work. And so I really just want to ask all parents, you know, I know we all have personal preferences, which is natural, but really think about making what's best for our community in the long run. And full day kindergarten is a wonderful thing where most of our surrounding towns currently offer. And you know, a lot of parents have been banking that this would have been available last year. And, you know, it wasn't. So that's understandable, but making it another year, we'll keep talking about it and we're not going to implement it is disappointing. So I just really want to voice that opinion as being a parent who has a kindergartner and a first grader and is not going to get any benefit from it. I can just say there's a huge benefit to the future community of upcoming kids in our area. And then the second, I've heard a lot of people say at the expense and, you know, kids are resilient. I mean, having both kids home, remote and not being in class and asking and begging to go into class because they want that experience and the teachers have done a wonderful job. I also think we have to understand it's not just at the expense of kids. Kids are resilient and they will be supportive. And if we can get a balanced, forwardcoming approach that's implemented and not delayed is to everyone's benefit in the long run. So change is hard for everybody and I'm not underplaying that by any means and everyone has personal situations, but I think we need to think broader and I think we're going to lose a lot of key people in the neighborhoods if we don't have full day kindergarten and if we don't implement something that's stable and clear. And if we kick the can down the road and delay it a bit further. So I don't have any questions. I really just wanted to make sure that I voiced that opinion because sometimes it feels like when I log on, I only hear a lot of squeaky wheels opposed to change or wanting questions. And I'm not meaning that in any undermining way, but really just to say, you know, if we remove ourselves and we were in a different situation, I think as a parent, you can respect that full day kindergarten is a good thing and having a balanced class size and equitable resources is a good thing. And having your kids in school with friends that they can play with in the neighborhood is a good thing. So that's really more than just a comment and not a question. And I'll pause there.
Great, Sandy. Thank you very much for your thoughts and feedback. Alex Sun is the next person. Alex, good evening.
Good evening. Doug and the board, thank you for your time this evening. My family and I are very new to the town, so please take any of these comments with a grain of salt. I certainly don't have as much vested as many that have previously spoken. It doesn't sound like there's anyone here that doesn't agree that full day kindergarten will be a benefit to the community and generations of children to come. And I think we should keep that point top of mind. I did sit through the entire presentation last week and, you know, the couple hours so far for this evening and have come away impressed with the thought given to the challenge and scenarios that were weighed. Given the guiding principles the team used as their North Star, I believe the proposed options were reasonable and in alignment with those principles. Now I understand change is uncomfortable for some and maybe temporarily inconvenient for others. There is no good time to make the transition. Every year, a new crop of families will be in the same situation with the same concerns about relocating their children. But the benefits of implementing full day kindergarten far outweigh those and will have outsized benefits for the community's children for years to come. And to build upon, you know, Sandy's last comments, I really don't think we should underestimate our children's ability to adapt and thrive in new environments. As a parent, I understand that we ultimately want the best for our kids. But no matter how hard we try, you know, their lives are not going to always be perfectly laid out and manicured the way we want it to be. They're going to need to, you know, be able to put in, be put in different situations and grow and thrive on their own as well. Again, thank you for the time this evening. Just want to share those comments.
Great, Alex. Thank you very much for your thoughts and feedback this evening. We certainly appreciate that. The next person is Indrani.
Yeah, hi, hello. Hi, Doug. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, how are you doing?
Very well, welcome. Thanks for joining tonight.
Sure. I have, I've listened, I joined a little late, sorry about that. But then I also listened to some of the parents concerned. And I have a rising fifth grader as well. And I have a few questions. But before I go to the questions, I have, I have to acknowledge the fact that when I moved into the town, I was really concerned about that why don't we have a full day kindergarten? So I really appreciate and I applaud all the Board of Ed members of trying to implement the full day kindergarten, which is going to be really beneficial for not only the kids, but all the families that are involved. So appreciate all of your concerns and your, you know, putting the effort to start that process. Being said that, my concern is I also realize that you have laid out that option where the rising fifth graders, families have the option to stay back in their own schools for the next year. So my question is regarding that. I have, again, my daughter, she, she, the only question she has when she learned about the change of school options, redistricting options. She, the first couple of questions that I heard from her is, am I going to have Mr., do I have the option to have Mr. Waller for my class? Right? My, my homeroom teacher. Second question that I heard from her is, am I going to have still Mr. Gasparini as my principal? Right? So a couple of questions that she raised and of course I have my own concerns regarding her friend circle and everything else. And how, you know, how she's going to be benefited in being Woodruff. I'm very close to Woodruff. But regardless of that, how are you going to answer a kid's questions which are very innocent? I understand that they are going to have the option to stay back in the school. But are they going to still have the option of having the same teachers, great teachers like Mr. Waller or Mrs. Berger? I know that Ms. Burton have left and I will tell you why my daughter has such questions because she doesn't only, of course, talk with her siblings, but she talks with other students as well. Meaning she talked with other senior students, right, which the girls talk more than the boys. So they, they talk, right, with other students, seniors, they interact regarding various events. And they talk about good things that the school have, right? So my, my concern is how do I answer my daughter's questions? I don't know the answer of it. And I said, you know, I really don't have the answer. So if I choose, if I go for the option of keeping her in the same school, what is the guarantee that she's still going to have Mrs. Gasparini and the teachers that she asks for or requests for? And I think not only for her, it's a lot of other students in being in Woodruff, they have the same similar concern. First, if they can walk to school. Second, if they're going to still have Ms. Gasparini, which they love. Right? And the third option is, the third question is they have, oh, am I going to have this teacher because I always see her in the hallway or see him in the hallway and he looks like the greatest teacher. And I've spoken to this kid. He's a great teacher or she's a great teacher. So that's, that's where my questions are.
Great. Indrani, thank you very much for your questions. Glad to hear that you're engaging with, I think you said it was your daughter. So as it relates to specific grades, obviously directionally at any school, forgetting, putting aside full day kindergarten and realigning our schools, when students stay at the same school, they typically get a new teacher when they go from kindergarten to first or second to third, third to fourth, fourth to fifth, they typically get a new teacher. Now, sometimes our teachers do move with classes. So right now, I don't know that we can answer her question very specifically as, you know, if she stays at Woodruff, will she have the same teacher next year? Again, most of our students get a different teacher. They're in the same building, but they get a different teacher because our teachers, for the most part, teach the same grants. And of course, there are exceptions to that. The second part of your question is about the principal, in this case, Ms. Gasparini. As, and we talked about this at our April eighth meeting, once we have the board approves that, we will be going through all of the changes that are required to do this, whether they be teacher changes or administrative changes. I am thrilled that your daughter likes Ms. Gasparini. I've heard similar comments about all of our, all of our principals. So if you'll just bear with us, as we get through the final recommendations, we will be, we'll be coming back to the, to the community with whatever the teacher and administrative changes are as any, we do, we do predict that there will be some changes. Obviously, we are realigning some of our schools, so we do expect some of those changes. But thanks for your question this evening. Next up is Debbie Terrero. Debbie, good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to reiterate some of the comments that several of the parents have talked about as well as some of the comments that Liz Kane has made. I think that the board and the administration has worked incredibly hard to try to come up with the best proposal possible for the school district. And I sincerely thank all of you for your time and your efforts that you've put forth in doing this. So thank you. I'd like to just also concur that I think the busing option would really be helpful. And I know you've already kind of addressed that, so I won't get into it. But I do think that's something that, that might make parents happier with that transition. And then finally, I do have two questions that I wanted to ask. You know, I know you've talked about pre-K. Would pre-K actually stay at Mary Kay only? Or would pre-K also be offered within Woodruff? And then the second question is, when you looked at the various elementary schools and and implementing the K through two and three through five model, why did you select Woodruff as the best option for K through two as opposed to maybe doing it at Hughes or at Mountain Park? Because Woodruff was such a, it's the largest school, I believe. And wouldn't that have been a better school to make the three through five?
Great, Debbie. Thanks for your question. I'll answer the first one. I'll let Dr. Varley answer the second one. The answer is the pre-K program, the entire pre-K program will exist at Mary Kay MacMillan. We are not splitting the pre-K program. So Mary Kay will have pre-K through two, whereas Woodruff will have K through two. And Dr. Varley, when you looked at this realignment, you obviously selected Woodruff to be K to two as opposed, you obviously had two other choices with Hughes, Mountain Park. Why did, why did that become part of the recommendation?
And honestly, you know, in discussions, we had numerous discussions about this. And one of the, one of the deciding fact, determining factors was that Woodruff still had existing plumbing, if I remember correctly, for bathrooms. So we wouldn't have to do an entire construction on those bathrooms. And that was one of the main factors that we went into.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Varley. The next person I see is just Lloyd.
Hi, it's Julie Lloyd. Hi, Doug.
I was going to say, I didn't know Floyd was the first name or Lloyd was the last name, but now that I know it's Julie Lloyd, I know the answer. Julie, good evening.
How are you?
I am very well tonight. How are you? Thanks for joining.
I'm good. Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to the board and to the superintendent and to, I believe, Mary Beth Kozak also. I don't know how to say her name.
I got it.
They all did, I think, a fantastic job on, you know, putting this together and looking at full day and then realizing that when you look at full day, that you need more space. And instead of putting, increasing our taxes by, I think whatever it was you said, I think it was an eight million dollar extension of some sort or whatever that would be. And to look at the best priced, I appreciate that from a, from a tax perspective, I thought that was helpful because I know that you have to not only look at just, you know, the, the students. Because I know that you have to not only look at just, you know, the, the, the students, but you have to look at the community as a whole. So I want to thank you for, for doing all that. I also appreciate all of the work that you did on looking at the inequities in the school. And I think that there is value there to say that you don't want only seventeen children in one classroom at one school. And, you know, not, you know, not fair for the kids at another school who have twenty-four in a class. I think that, that is, I'm glad that you brought that up. I think that's a whole word that, that is continuously looked at to say, to sort of make sure that there are no inequities. I'm glad that you're going back to a nineteen to twenty-one, I can arguably say, I hope that's the case, classroom, because that's why we all moved here, was the, the smaller class sizes. I also appreciate the inequities in services, and I am thankful that you are going to realign those as well. And the counselors and all those other things, I thought that was quite helpful. I'm also thankful that you aren't only affecting less than twenty percent of the students. I think that's also appreciated. You know, we hired the superintendent and you hired the director of the education, the early childhood education. Mary Beth, to do this, to do this, to make sure that we did it the right way. And based on all of their experience over the years, because I have zero experience in education, I am trusting the fact that they've, that they've done their homework and I can tell that they've done their homework. And they have looked at all the scenarios and I am, I'm thankful for that, because I don't have that experience. And I do, we do rely, I do rely on them to, to, you know, take that into consider, to, to, to do the work for me. Because that's what they're supposed to do. And we vote for the Board of Education to ensure that you all are looking out for our best interests. And I truly believe that each one of you is looking out for the best interest of all of us. The last thing I want to say is, my kids went through Mary Kay. They made all these great friends at Mary Kay. I mean, Mary Kay is an experience. It's a wonderful, wonderful experience. They went through that school and they made all these great friends. And then they had to leave some of those friends and they had to go to Mountain Park. And then they made, you know, then they kept, they kept some friends and then they, you know, expanded their, their group there at Mount Park. And then they went back to sixth grade at Columbia, and then they expanded their group again. What I like about this scenario is that you're actually going to be with your friends from kindergarten through fifth grade. I think that's awesome. I think that's like, that's what I wanted for my children back in the day. Mary, and, and I will say another thing, Mary Kay, the experience there is so loving and caring, and they really do a great job and make sure that your kid is getting the best education. And all they're doing basically is adding second grade. So it's the same experience with second grade. And I think that's awesome. It's awesome that they're going to be teaching, teaching these kids to read and, and they're gonna, and they're gonna, the second grader is going to be helping the kindergartner? I mean, that's, that's what we want. We want this in our, we want this in, in, in our community. And allowing the third, fourth and fifth to really be strong and, and, and to do what they're supposed to do and learn what they're supposed to learn and, and, and get that third through fifth grade experience? I don't know. I think this, this actually, I think, could be one of the better scenarios I've seen. Not that I've seen so many, but at least the better scenarios, I feel like our kids are going to experience. And I just say hats off to all of you, and I thank you all very much for all that you've done.
Julie, Julie, thank you very much for your feedback and your comments, speaking on behalf of all the people you thanked. We certainly appreciate that. Next up is Tony, is it Canuth? Tony?
Yes, Canuth.
Hi, Tony. Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you doing?
I am very well. Thanks for joining.
You're welcome. I guess this question's already been asked. I want to bring back up scenario three a little bit. I know people have asked that it's not going to be added. We've clearly stated that. Can you speak at all to why or what the decision making was as to why scenario three is unequivocally not being added? Even as people have requested that. And I would also like to just state, I would like to request it to be added also. Second question would be, it seemed like from your presentation, from the previous meeting, that full day kindergarten was agreed upon back on February fourth or something to that effect. And yet, I think you said that it was April twenty-ninth it was going to be voted on. So if you could clarify that and then just expand upon our full day kindergarten and redistrict the full day kindergarten will only happen with redistricting and vice versa, or other separate issues? So again, if you could just clarify that full day kindergarten. And then, I know people have spoken about this before, and I guess this is more of a comment first. Just the mental health of the kids who are moving schools. I have a rising fifth grade daughter at Hughes. We've talked to her a couple of times about it already. She is very concerned about it. She reached out to Mrs. Nardi already. And Mrs. Nardi reached out really quickly back, got on a Zoom meeting with her, so I want to give credit to Mrs. Nardi. And that is one frustrating thing for me as a parent, that we are in the place of moving from Hughes to Mountain Park. And I'm sure the people in Mountain Park are wonderful. But we are very distraught about losing Mrs. Nardi and having a five of our kids go through Hughes. And our youngest one is going to be a rising third grader. And I know in the FAQ, you said that there's possibilities of siblings being moved. So we are under the impression that our rising third grader will be forced to go to Mountain Park, while our fifth grader will have the option to stay at Hughes or go to Mountain Park, which is causing much consternation for her. So I guess that was all a statement. And I guess then my question becomes, do you have any idea specifically how many students are affected by that, where a rising fifth grader will have the option to stay? And a younger sibling will be forced to go to a new school? And is there any consideration to not allowing that to happen, to allowing the younger sibling to stay with the older sibling, even if the older sibling wants to stay behind at the school just for fifth grade?
Tony, thanks for your comments and questions. Let me, I think you had a comment and a couple of questions. Your first one was, why was scenario three not added? Scenario three was not added because, you know, based on the recommendation of the superintendent, it was not a developmentally appropriate solution. It moves us in the opposite direction by putting like age kids together. Our K to two, three to five structure winds up with three grades together. And scenario three moves us in the opposite direction with five grades together, one, ones through five, as well as it costs upwards of a half a million dollars to do that. So that's why scenario three wasn't added. Well, your second question about the April twenty-ninth meeting and, and that vote. At that time, the superintendent will make a recommendation for the realignment of schools. The realignment of schools includes both full day kindergarten and the realignment. They are, they are tied together. We are planning to implement full day kindergarten. And with that as part of the solution, there will be a realignment, so there will be a recommendation by the superintendent based on the parent input. And then there will be, will be a vote. As to your specific question regarding, you have students who are two years apart, like many parents do in our districts. And you said you're, you're rising fifth grader and you're rising third grader. And we do understand that. So I, I don't know the exact number of people. We can get back to you on, on that. I don't know the exact number of people who at, at a school have a third or a fourth grader. We could certainly get that number for you. And I do understand that that represents a challenge, especially if you, if you want your fifth grader to stay at Hughes, and yes, your third grader does not have the option, will have to go to Mountain Park. Just so you know, we looked at how many grades could we offer this transition to? We looked at, you know, obviously, as one of our guiding principles is to minimize the change impact. And we looked at every grade and in every one of the scenarios, could we offer the transition? And it turns out, based on the configurations, based on the size, based on the new map, we could only offer it to our rising fifth graders. So the rising fifth graders at Woodruff and the rising fifth graders at Hughes will have that option. But that's not being offered to the rising third graders and rising fourth graders. I do understand that that, in your case, represents a challenge, because you have one child's being given the option and the other child is not being given the option. Tony, thanks for your question tonight. The next person I see is Lucinda Hayes. Lucinda, good evening. How are you tonight?
I'm doing well. Thanks so much. I'm going to keep this brief. I, I've been listening to everyone and I want you to know that when I hear people talk about there's never a good time. There's never, there's never maybe a good time, but there are certainly worse times than others. And I'm coming with a scenario, just so that you understand, you do actually have physical people here that are being impacted. Sighted and we've been through a really difficult series of issues over the past year and a half. I'm going to tell you the specifics, only because I think people need to hear that it isn't like my kid isn't resilient or all that. But some kids have had a lot hitting them, things I can't control as a parent, you know? Gasparini, I'm going to tell you, is the most wonderful principal, and she has been very helpful when our little neighbor, the little girl my daughter walks to school with, was diagnosed with cancer. They had a special communication to help us explain that to my child, why she wouldn't be able to be there with her and her buddy at Oasis anymore. That was hard. That was the end of two thousand and nineteen. You fast forward to the spring of twenty twenty, you have this fearful COVID thing and all of a sudden shut down and you're adjusting to this remote learning. And it was stressful, because both my husband and I had to be in lockdown, working from home and trying to get her independent. It was hard and she's an only child, so it's stressful, right? So you, you get through that, you think, good girl. Summer, I had a, a medical issue, had an asthma attack, get away from me, ended up in the ICU. She had to watch me be carted away on a gurney with a ventilator attached to me. Then it was, why can't mommy help me? Right? For months, you'd recover. She was resilient through that. You know, I can keep going on, because in January, my grandmother, her, her grandmother, my mother-in-law passed away from COVID in a nursing home. And we had to have a virtual funeral and say goodbye through a Zoom, which, I'm going to tell you what. When you're that person who's just had one thing hit you in the face after the other, and then these things keep coming at you, you want to say, please, could you just consider the wellbeing of my child? Just maybe not right now. This is a wonderful thing. I agree with Julie. Love Julie. Love Michael DePola. I love working with everybody who's been in the school system. And I support the kindergarten. I don't really, I don't support the right now, because I kind of feel like I'm trying to get on board with understanding all the benefits and being the team player. I just feel like the timing is really hard. And I'm trying to understand how to explain something I didn't even want my kid knowing about, but she goes to school and the other kids tell her what it is. And then I have to explain, they haven't made decisions yet. We will see. But if you give the kids a choice of the stay, rising fifth grader stay or not, that doesn't mean all her friends are going to stay. And I understand they are going to make new friends or different things. It's just hard. It's really, really hard. And it's been a really hard series of years. And the only reason I'm giving you my details is to let you know, there are a lot of people with details of, of years that are really hard. And then there's a lot of people who are just like, you know, let's just get back to normal, make all the changes right, right now. And nothing against the people who think that their kid is special and should have special consideration. I'm not trying to be that person. I really am willing to do whatever's best for everyone. I just want people to put the emotion back into it as the wellbeing and health of these kids. They've been through a really hard time. It's just been a really bad series of, the whole COVID thing has made a lot of stress on families. And I don't know, I'm just putting it out there, because I feel uncomfortable sharing it, but I feel like people need to really put a face to it. Like, this is hard. My, my life hasn't been as hard as my neighbor two doors down, right? That, that, that's really hard. She's also going to be a rising fifth grader at Woodruff, right? So it's hard. That's all I'm telling you. Thanks. No question.
Lucinda, thank you very much for your feedback and for sharing your personal story. Let me offer, you know, just my condolences. It sounds like you've had loss this year. You have difficulty this year at, almost sounds like at every generation between your child, yourself. And I think you said it was your mother or mother-in-law. So, so thank you for sharing that and thank you for, for sharing that. And you're right, this is something that we need to consider the wellbeing. And we, we do consider that, but your, your feedback and your story makes it more personal. And it does, it does help us and it does give us a visual of that. So thank you for sharing your, your story. The next person, next person up is, is Jean Kingsley. And Jean, before you ask your question, it's now approaching ten o'clock. We've been at this for about two and a half hours. There are only a couple of more people who are on the list who haven't spoken yet tonight. So I'm going to put in, an end to this. After Jean, there's Vishaka Bonsal, Lorraine Anderson and Doug Grober, those are the people who I see in the chat window. And after Doug speaks, I'm going to close the citizens' hearing. We do have another meeting on the twenty-second, which is a week from tomorrow night, where we'll do the exact same thing. So there's additional time to ask questions as well as myself or Dr. Varley says, other ways to give feedback. So with that said, Jean Kingsley, good evening. Jean, how are you tonight?
I'm good. Thanks, Doug. And I'll, I'll try to be really brief. For those that don't know who I am already, I am a twenty-five-year resident of Berkeley Heights. I have put four children through the district. My youngest is now a freshman at Governor Livingston. So I was here back when Mary Kay MacMillan was not Mary Kay MacMillan, but it was a county special ed school. And I was here through a lot of the discussions around the creation of that school. My daughter actually was the second class to attend Mary Kay MacMillan. And I remember a lot of the angst about the school and the pushback from parents and, and on the change and the separating of siblings. And it's all real, but, but all I can say is, Mary Kay MacMillan is a tremendous experience for our children and the confidence building that it does for these children. I don't think there is a parent that put their kid through that school, even the inaugural year, that didn't think in the end it was the right decision for their kids and it was the right decision for their town. I also was here back in two thousand and ten, when there was neighborhood coffees and town halls and all kinds of discussions about full day kindergarten. And the district couldn't figure out a way to fund her to make it happen. And so fast forward, you know, twelve years later, we're finally to a point where we need to be. And everybody needs to just remember, Berkeley Heights has outstanding schools, because we have outstanding teachers and outstanding administrators. And while we all have tremendous school pride, and I was a Hughes mom, and I would have told you Hughes was the greatest school. You know, I worked on committees with the other principals from the other schools, and they all are outstanding and they all love their children. So no matter which school anybody is going to or going to be moved to, they're going to love your child and they're going to take care of your child and they're going to make sure that this is what's best for the child. So I just think people need to really take a deep breath and think about, change is always hard. But this is a wonderful district, and I think we need to trust our administration for the, the work and the research they've done. Thank you.
Great, Jean. Thank you very much for your comments. Next, Vishaka Bonsal. Hopefully I got your name right. You're next this week.
Yes. Hi Doug, how are you?
I'm very well. Thank you for joining tonight.
Okay, I think I'm getting this message. All right. So thanks a lot for responding to my chat message about the fact that it will be up to the discretion of the fifth grade parents to keep their children either at William Woodruff or send them to Hughes or Mountain Park, whatever is applicable. So just for background, I have a rising fifth grader as well as a rising third grader. So hearing everything that I have heard at the town hall, I'm not even going to bring up the fact that, you know, whatever option we go with, option four or five, it will possibly split my children across two different schools. So let's put that aside for a minute and let's talk only about, you know, the rising fifth grader. So as I understand, under option four, you're providing an option to the parents to decide whether to keep the children or send them to Hughes or Mountain Park. What's not resonating with me as a parent is, how, how is that a good decision to provide that option, although that might have been done with all the good intention? Because once you provide that option, you're already fragmenting the fifth grade community. And what I mean by that is, if the Woodruff, you know, if I decide to keep my child at Woodruff because of the awesome staff, because of Mrs. Gasparini, if I don't have a visibility whether I would have access to the same staff members for my child, if Mrs. Gasparini would stay or would she decide to move on or any such changes? Would I have, you know, the same set of friends that my children use, that my child used to have or not? You know, I think inadvertently, you know, the William Woodruff parent who wants to keep their rising fifth grader at Woodruff has been put at a disadvantage if they decide to go down this route. So I just want to hear, you know, your view, Doug, like, how, how does this resonate? So I just want to hear, you know, your view, Doug, like how, how does this resonate with the board members?
Great. Uh, was that your only question for Shaka tonight?
Yes.
Uh, thank you for your question. Uh, so uh, as I mentioned previously, one of our guiding principles was to minimize the change impact to as many students as possible. And one of the things that, that was based on was, was to keep a child at the existing school that they're at. That was, that was, that was what we equated to minimizing the change. Uh, and based on well, to offer that for rising fifth grade students. Uh, and I, I do understand, uh, you're like the person, I believe, was also um someone who spoke just before it was Tony, who's in the same situation um at, at Hughes, where you have two children who are two years apart. One has the option to, to stay at the, at, at his or her room in a school that they're currently at. And the other child doesn't. So our belief was it was to let the parents decide. Let the parents decide if they want for that student to remain at the current school. Uh, again, minimize the transition. We've heard from a couple of parents tonight about the impact of additional transitions by allowing a rising fifth graders to stay, in this case, at either Hughes or Woodruff, we minimize the transition. I understand that for someone like you, as well as Tony, uh, that you might choose to have both your kids at the same school. So they might move to whatever that, that new school is, and that would be a, an additional transition. Uh, so uh, our, our directives as, as a board was to offer the parents that choice. What, we tried to offer that for as many possible grades as, as we could. Cause again, the feedback we got around transition was that would minimize the transitions. We could only do it for the rising fifth graders. So that's why we provided the option. It is completely a parent choice. Uh, each parent will have to decide based on their, their child, in your case, and in Tony's cases, what the impact that have on their other uh child. I understand that uh, that also changes the pickup and drop-off times. We understand that uh as well. But it, it is a parent choice and that's why we gave, um, why we gave uh that option. But for Chuck, I thank you for your questions. See you. The next person is Lorraine Anderson. Lorraine, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for your time. I know it's really late. I'm just gonna keep this short. Um, I don't think anyone is arguing the fact that we shouldn't implement full day kindergarten. When that plan was announced earlier, um, I was excited, didn't realize at what expense. My concern is the timing, like many of the parents that have voiced their opinions on here. Um, we, you know, it goes without saying. I mean, you say that the children are resilient and they are, but how much are we testing them? How much are we pushing them? You heard Lucinda's story. Dakota spoke up very eloquently about how this is really gonna, you know, have an impact on our kids. So I just ask, is it really worth it to push it in September? Or can we wait a little longer? And you also said that you trust the community. You trust us. Um, and if you do, then why not put option three on the survey? Um, why is it just four and five? Why did you propose five options when we really can only try to vote for four and five? Um, and I just urge you, I, I, I appreciate you taking the time. You say you're listening, but I, I think you're hearing us. But I want you to really listen to the four hundred twenty people that have signed this petition and all of the people that have spoken tonight. Um, there are a lot of concerned community members, parents, and, and this is really dividing our, our town and our community. And I, I think um, if we can just put, pump the brakes a little bit and just wait for things to settle down, especially with this pandemic and we get out and get herd immunity and just kind of live life normally for a beat. And then we can properly assess, but I, I personally think it's too soon and I really hope that you reconsider putting option three back on. Thank you.
Great, Lorraine. Thank you uh, for your comments and questions. Uh, let me answer both of those uh, questions. Uh, why did we cover all the, the options, ones through five? We felt it was our obligation to uh list out all the scenarios that we, that we, we considered. Um, obviously we didn't list every single scenario, but the ones that got active consideration, we wanted to present those. We didn't just present the recommendation. Obviously, we presented other ones that were, were, were being considered. Like I previously said this evening, the reason that scenario three was not, was not recommended and why it's not on the survey is it's not developmentally appropriate. It moves us in the opposite direction of uh having like age school children together. Our K to two, three to five has a three-year uh window banding of kids together. And scenario three has a five-year banding of, of children together. And based on the superintendent and the other experts that we have, we didn't feel that that was something that uh was developmentally appropriate. There. In terms of the why now, uh, obviously scenario five uh does delay the realignment of schools for another year. So for people like yourself who feel that they're concerned about the timing, they want their, their children to get back to, you know, again, some type of normal uh structure, maybe even the way it was uh pre-pandemic. Um, scenario five allows for full day kindergarten for just our youngest students. Uh, but then it pauses the realignment until September of twenty twenty-two. So it does, uh, it does exactly what you, what you're suggesting. Uh, it slows that down uh and allows uh children to get an additional year uh under their belt at their current school uh before we do the realignment. So thank you for your questions this evening. The last person for our uh citizens' hearing this evening is Doug Gruber, Grober, Gruber, Grober. I'm not sure I got it right, Doug. I apologize.
Um, oh, I'm on video. Hello.
You're on video. Good evening, Doug. How are you tonight?
Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you and see you. Good evening.
Okay, good. I, I appreciate the, the, um, I don't know the name of the, of the lady who spoke just before me, but uh her comments are very close to kind of what I have to say. And I'll try to be brief because we've been at this a long time. Um, I understand, and I was a little late to this, but I understand that um, an answer about not putting the uh redistricting to a vote is because parents can't be objective. Um, I'm boiling it down, but basically voting is personal. It can't get any more personal. Redistricting is personal. And it can't get any more personal than what we're going through right now. So I'm just gonna refute that other thing that was said about being objective, but I think it's important people understand emotions are involved. We have studies, we have things, but it's about everyday life and um teachers get it, teachers are involved in life with the kids, especially the last year. Uh, it brings me to Woodruff School. So I have a few things to say about this. Um, I looked up Woodruff, um, just on the cuff ratings. Top one percent best teachers in the U.S., top three percent teachers in New Jersey, top ten percent elementary in New Jersey, top eight percent best elementary in New York City area, top four percent best teachers in the New York City area, number eleven in the county. So my point to that is this, we want to knock out an A-rated school that's placed twenty percent of the kids, spend about a half million on bathrooms for four classrooms. I think that there are a lot of smart people in this district. I think that there are smart people on the Board of Ed. And I think that there's a smarter decision than what really seems like just a matter of convenience for space. It really looks like this is just the firsthand grab to try to make a quick solution to something. Um, that, my next comment is about the survey. So I, I wanted to highlight, and I'm not taking away from the other elementary schools, we have a highly rated system. Knocking out a perfect elementary school that has full respect of its community, I think is egregious. Uh, and not completely thought out. There are better solutions than knocking out what we have. The survey, um, my daughter came to me and she said she was worried about what was going on because we talk about it a lot. So it's personal. And she, and I said, well, you know, no matter what happens, we're probably gonna be okay. But she said, yeah, but dad, it doesn't seem fair. What they want is option A or option A just later. So my eight-year-old even understands the limitation on the survey. We live in a democracy. You guys need to put every option on the survey. Number three, number one, number two. You also need to put whether people don't want redistricting at all. I think that everybody wants full day kindergarten. Uh, I don't think that's a question. It's not a question of that. We're not talking about that anymore. We're talking about the way you guys want to do the redistricting. It's fast. It's rushed. It's um, it's all the things everybody's been saying tonight. So I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be redundant. Um, my other question is this, have you ever thought about the fact that we could still be in this pandemic September? That we could still be doing hybrid or remote because we're not over this. And what you're knocking out is familiarity for a slew of kids. I understand the urgency for full day kindergarten. And there's no guarantee that we will be out of it. And that goes back to the comments that the lady before me said. There are very real concerns about this. There's a lot of fear. So I need you guys to answer that and whether you've ever considered that impact? And whether you've ever considered the true impact of knocking out Woodruff School, an A-rated school for a somewhat unproven configuration as far as, I mean, everybody can pull data for what they want. For it, against it, what have you, but really you guys are making a major change in this district, a major change. Why it's not being put to a vote to the entire community, I have no idea. And I don't really think that's been clearly, clearly directly answered. So um, thank you for the time. I thank you guys conscientiously for listening to everybody. Um, but this is, you really have to think about what you're doing here because it's, it's not the right direction.
Doug, Doug, thank you very much for your, for your comments. Um, I've written down, I'm not, you had two questions in there. Let me answer both of them. Uh, your first question was how we consider the pandemic and the fact that we could still be in the pandemic in September? The answer is absolutely yes. Uh, we have already begun uh working on what the school model will look like in September. Of course, we are hopeful that uh September of this year looks very different than the past year has been and going back to last year. But we have thought through what would it be like if we had to still have some type of cohort learning, which we've worked through this year. Uh, also given the option for remote, I'm not sure uh what the guidelines from the state will be, but the answer is yes, we have thought through that. The second thing you mentioned and you actually posed it as a question, so I'll answer it. You said, why are we designing a realignment of schools that knocks out Woodruff? Um, not, not sure I would uh agree with that word, knocking out Woodruff. Uh, Woodruff is being changed from its current structure of a two to five school to be a K to, K to two school. And for all the great reasons that some of the Woodruff parents uh talked this evening uh about that, Woodruff is gonna continue to be a great school. It's going to be a different kind of school. It's gonna be a K to two great school whenever this re, realignment uh happens. As well as the other schools, which are also all changing, are gonna be going from great the way they were uh in the current model to how they will be in, in the future model. So uh, I do, I do understand, you know, the spirit of your question is that there is more impact to the students in the Woodruff community because the grade, the grade change that's happening at Woodruff is greater from there than it is obviously for Hughes uh, for Mountain Park.
Am I still on mute?
Uh, no, you're talking.
Okay. You're, you're changing, you're changing everything about that school except the name. So, I mean, I, 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 I agree to disagree with you.
Okay. Uh, and thank you. You won't be the first person to uh, agree to disagree with me, but I do respect that. So Doug, thank you for your comments uh this evening. Um, with that, I am going to close the citizens' hearing uh this evening. I want to make uh two comments before I wrap up tonight. So first of all, um, thank you to everybody in the community. I think we had at, at one time close to two hundred people uh on the, on the town hall this evening. So thank you for everybody who committed their time uh to, to this evening. I counted thirty-one people who uh addressed the board tonight. Uh, for those thirty-one people, thank you. Uh, sometimes it's not easy to talk in public or on a Zoom meeting with, with two, with two hundred people. Uh, there's also, so anyway, thank you to all thirty-one people uh who spoke tonight. Uh, there is a lot of people who also uh provided their feedback that did not speak tonight, uh, but they're either they chose to not want to speak in public or they chose uh to communicate with us in another way. Uh, so uh, there were a couple of comments about is the board interested in feedback and do we get feedback? The answer to that is a definitive yes, and it's not just what you listen to. So if you obviously many of you have listened to the April eighth meeting and this meeting and will likely be on the April twenty-second meeting. And that does represent a lot of feedback, but I want to make sure it's very clear. That doesn't represent the only feedback. There is, there is, uh, there are other, there are other forms of feedback that, that, that come our way. Uh, again, uh, it's not always at, at the direct meeting. So thank you to those attended. We have another session uh on a week from tonight on April twenty-second. Uh, and everybody is welcome to ask uh more questions uh that night uh as well. Uh, I want to thank all the board members who have now probably been here close to, to three hours. I know our administrative team. Time to, uh, to work tomorrow. So thank you for, for doing that. I'm glad that we got a chance that everybody could ask a, a first question. And again, for those who wanted to ask a second question, there are other ways to contact the board members and there will be another, I suspect, two and a half to three hour meeting uh next Thursday for that. So with that, I will close the citizens' hearing. And I will take a motion to adjourn from board members.
So I'm moved.
Motion and a second to uh, to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, the meeting is adjourned and we'll look forward to seeing people at our next uh town hall meeting on, on Thursday, April twenty-seven. Good night and have a good rest of the week.